Good evening. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The public can attend tonight's meeting in person at the George DeCiero City and County Buildings Council Chambers, located at 1 Deco Drive, or watch live on Channel 8 through live streaming on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/live. The public may also participate in public comment either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants have 3 minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have 2 minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue have 1 and 1/2 minutes to speak. If joining in person, we'll ask you to come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson. Cohen.
Here.
Henkel. Jazurski.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Lim.
Here.
Lindstett.
Here.
Marsh Holson.
Here.
Schaaf.
Here, attending remotely.
Ward.
Here.
Thank you. A quorum is present. Will everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to 5 minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their comments to 2 minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for a meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Seeing none, this agenda is approved. This evening, under petitions and communications, staff will present information regarding the 2022 Great American Picnic and Fireworks, scheduled to take place on Monday, July 4th, at the Broomfield County Commons Park. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Kay Gazaway, every time we see you, we know it's something fun.
I do have something fun. Thank you. Thank you for that nice introduction. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protem, council members, and city managers. Hi, I'm Kay Gazaway. I'm your Broomfield Community Events Coordinator. I'm very happy to be here tonight because that means I'm inviting you and all the community members to come to the Great American Picnic on the 4th of July at the Broomfield County Commons Park. That is Monday, the 4th, at 5:00 PM. But first, there's a small matter of an annual softball game. That's between the senior softball team and city council. The game is at 12:00 noon at Northmore Park at the Softball Diamond, and I'd like to be the first to wish you good luck against this very talented senior softball team. I'd like to introduce Kat McCusker and ask her to come up and join me here at the podium because she would like to issue a challenge to city council.
You're even better in person.
The Broomfield Renegades, senior 70s softball team members, who are, dare I say, elderly, although quite dapper and somewhat spry, do hereby challenge the Broomfield City Council members, who are presumably younger and spryer, but not nearly as dapper, to an Independence Day game at high noon on July 4th at Northmore Park Field. So, what do you say?
Well, it's on.
And I love your outfit. Thank you so much, Kat. Thank you so much for coming.
All right. Well, after your game is over, I would like to invite you to come back over to the Commons Park because all the fun starts at 5 o'clock this year with inflatables and face painting and food trucks and beer gardens. And the popular beer garden is back again this year, hosted by our friends at the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce. And I'm very pleased to tell you, we're actually adding a second beer garden and food court this year to the east side of the fields. So, we're going to have a beer garden on each side. There'll be a different brewer on each side and different food trucks on each side. So, I ask, invite you to explore them all, find your favorites, and enjoy that. Our goal is to reduce the waiting line for the food trucks and give guests even more food choices for the evening. And then, of course, the beers are $7 at night, and so bring your ID so you can have a tasty brew. Then, there is a really cute bike parade. They start lining up at 5:30 on the South Pod Shelter House, and the parade takes off at 5:45. It's led by two of Broomfield's finest, our Bike Patrol officers. And thank you, Mayor, for offering to kick off the parade this year. We really appreciate that. Everyone of all ages is invited to decorate a bike and take a lap around the park. It's really fun. And then, at 6:15, we invite all of you to join us at the city council tent to meet and greet with the community and hand out some goodies. Your tent is just south of the main pavilion by the playground, and we'll meet you there. And then, music. We have a musical lineup. At 6:00 PM, Spinfany will start us off. They are an all-female electric string quartet, and they perform this interesting blend of classic and pop and rock. And then, at 7:15, Soul X will take over the stage and get us all dancing with their high-energy dance music. And then, around 9:15 is when we assess the weather with our launch team. And we have to decide when and how the fireworks will actually go off that night. Now, weather's always a big part of this event, and if there's a wind or rain concern, and our launch crew can delay the fireworks up until 10:00 PM. And if we haven't launched the fireworks by 10:00 PM, we will cancel the show for this year. But I have a... I'm pretty confident we're going to have a perfect weather night, and so we're going to have a very exciting fireworks display at approximately 9:30. Now, historically, this event draws about 15,000 guests, so you can imagine the parking lot around County Commons Park gets packed. So, I want to give you a couple tips. There is accessible parking available in the west lot near the main pavilion. Plus, the senior recreation van with the wheelchair lift will be making circles from Legacy High School to the County Commons Park all night, along with five school buses making that route. So, I would encourage everyone to utilize that shuttle service from the Legacy High School. It starts at 5:00 PM, and it runs until about 11:00 or until we get the last guests back to their cars. You can follow along on any last-minute updates about the Great American Picnic on the Broomfield social media accounts. And finally, I'd just like to acknowledge and thank all the city departments that are collaborating to make this event a big success. There's the police, and the streets, and the parks, and recreation, and facilities, and communications, and North Metro Fire. It's a pretty impressive team. So, that's everything I have for you tonight, and I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that update, Ms. Gazaway. Next is public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please step up to the podium or ask questions. Now, these comments are for the 4th of July, so if you want to wait for general, yeah, hold that thought. Anybody want to comment on the Great American Picnic? Well, it sounds outstanding, and I'm glad that we're adding more food options and drink options because I know it's probably going to be record attendance, like everything has been, so outstanding. Any of my council colleagues have any questions or comments? Yes, Mayor Protem.
We're giving out pinwheels for all the kids. Yes.
They're red, white, and blue?
Yes, and they'll be at your tent for you. Something different this year.
It's neater than the frosting.
And probably more hygienic. Anyone else?
All right. Well, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll now move to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than the items already listed elsewhere on this evening's agenda. If there's anyone who'd like to come comment on the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you have 3 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council. My name is John E. Walt, and I live in the Pinnacle North subdivision. We use symbolism throughout our lives as a shorthand for complex subjects. Symbols can convey pages' worth of written text with a simple glance. One symbol that conveys a significant amount of information is a flag, especially when that flag is raised by a government. In a representation of democracy such as ours, the voting public cedes their authority to the elected government, so any flag raised by that government should represent the voters who ceded the power to be governed. Broomfield currently flies three flags year-round: the flag of the United States of America, the Colorado State Flag, and the Broomfield City and County Flag. These flags are right and appropriate to fly as they represent the elected bodies that have jurisdiction over the population of Broomfield. These flags are also inclusive in that anyone with very few exceptions is represented and governed by the governments these flags represent. Whatever your feelings toward these flags, they by their nature represent everyone within their jurisdiction. There are also two other flags flown by Broomfield: a flag for law enforcement is flown during National Police Week, and the Pride Flag is flown during the month of June. The Flag for National Police Week represents a police department, which is part of the Broomfield City and County Government, so it is appropriate that Broomfield flies that flag for a week in May. The Pride Flag, however, is a community flag that has no affiliation with Broomfield. The Pride Flag, by definition, only represents those that self-identify as part of the LGBTQIA+ community. To be clear, my issue is not with the Pride Flag itself or those that it represents, but it is only the fact that Broomfield has elevated one exclusive community group above all other residents that I take issue with. Flying a flag is government speech, which, like private speech, is protected, but it also has consequences. Why has Broomfield selected the LGBTQIA+ community as the only community group worthy of representation with a flag outside the city building? What other groups in Broomfield could be recognized by flying their flag in front of the city and county buildings? If we fly a flag for one exclusive group, isn't it only equitable to fly a flag for every exclusive group? I understand the intent of flying the Pride Flag, and I see what that flag means to the people it represents. However, the unintended consequence of flying that flag is for the month of June, the majority of the population of Broomfield are reduced in status and their representation. I am not asking that the Pride Flag be removed now, but I am asking that the policy that awards one and only one community group as worthy of having their flag fly outside the city and county buildings be reviewed and discussed in a public forum, such as a town hall or a future study session. The only equitable solution, in my opinion, is to stop dividing the people of Broomfield by flying many exclusive groups' flags, but rather, we should unify under the Broomfield Flag, which is inclusive of all people living in Broomfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I don't see any online. Well, next is council's community and event updates. Before we begin with council's updates, I wanted to mention some noteworthy sporting news that brings great pride to our community regarding two hometown high school baseball teams who literally hit it out of the park at the 2022 Colorado State Class 5A Baseball Championships. The Broomfield High School Eagles and Legacy High School Lightning battled it out in a title game that's been described as a back-and-forth battle to ultimately end their seasons in first and second place in the state in Class 5A. Please join me in congratulating Eagles coach Cale Gilmore and Lightning coach Tyrone Giordano, along with all the other coaching and support staff, and of course, the talented young athletes and their proud families, friends, and fans. We also wanted to take a moment to recognize the son of tenured Broomfield staff Greg Scott. Greg's son Noah just finished up his junior year at Broomfield High. His clutch pitching was critical to the Eagles clinching the title. Congratulations, Noah, and again to all of the players, coaches, families, and fans. Would any of the representatives here being recognized this evening like to come to the podium and make any comments?
Mayor, council members, my name is Ty Giordano. I am the head baseball coach at Legacy High School. On behalf of Legacy High School, I wanted to come here and thank you all for the kind letter and the invite to come and celebrate what was an absolutely unbelievable season. I want to congratulate all. So, Coach Gilmore, I know he couldn't be here tonight. I talked to him earlier today, but I want to congratulate Broomfield High School and what he put together and what they did this year as a program. I got to tell you what, it was such an amazing game, amazing year. You know, he and I talked. It's funny because we both grew up here in Broomfield. I don't know how much you guys know about either one of us. He was a Broomfield graduate. I graduated from Regis High School. But I was born and raised here and grew up right over there off 11th and Ash Street. So, my wife Lisa, who's here tonight, is a Broomfield High School graduate. And so, we've been kind of competing against each other our whole life, so to speak. And when he got the job at Broomfield, he and I had a couple lunches together, and we sat there and said, "Isn't this kind of weird, man? We're competing against each other." And now, we're both head coaches of the high schools here in Broomfield, and it's kind of a unique moment for the two of us. And then, when we played during the year, they ended up beating us in league, but we ended up taking the league title. And he and I were talking at the conference game, or at the conference meeting with the coaches, and I said, "Hey, man, I'll see you at the state title game. Hopefully, we don't meet each other prior to that." And he goes, "Yeah, wouldn't it be great to be in that game together?" And I said, "Be great to ensure that Broomfield had a championship regardless of who was there." So, anyway, it was a great game. I really enjoyed it. And I just wanted to stop in tonight and say thank you very much for the kind words. And hopefully, this is something that brings the community of Broomfield together instead of separating. I mean, competition sports is a great way for the community to come together, and hopefully, that's something that we can build upon as a community and bring the two high schools together in competition. So, anyway, thank you very much. That's about enough of my time. I appreciate you very much.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Giordano. I mean, it even makes it sweeter that you guys have that history here and to bring those teams together to the championship must have felt even better.
Yeah, it was something else. It was super special, for sure. It was unfortunate that one team had to lose, which was us, but, you know, we did the best we could, and hopefully, we get a shot at it again. I got to say one thing, though. That softball game between you guys and that woman, that's a game I want to go see.
You got to come watch.
Mayor, city council, appreciate the opportunity to represent Broomfield High School. Cale texted me this morning. He said, "Sean, are you going to the city council meeting?" And I said, "Yes, I plan to go there." He said, "Unfortunately, I've got a business trip in Wyoming," so he's there for business. But did want to extend a great thank you to the city of Broomfield for the letter that was sent to Cale and inviting us to this moment. And I'm really excited because this was really my first year of coaching at the high school level on the C Team. And Mayor, you know me more from Thunder Baseball League, and she got to throw out her first pitch, and what we're really...
It was short field.
We're going to work on that for next year, but... But we are excited because we embrace the city of Broomfield. We've got our home here. We've got our hitting facility here. And what we really like is a lot of the kids on both those teams came through Thunder Baseball League at some point in their career, a lot of the players. So, it's really... It's close to my heart to see these kids develop and really get to the next level, which is high school baseball, and really pushing them to go beyond. And I think we've partnered with Ty Giordano, and he's actually our Director of Talent now and Programming. So, we've embraced legacy, and we're bringing Broomfield High School with my bridge with Cale. And I'm just excited to see this rivalry continue to get better, and hopefully, every year, we're meeting in the state championship. So, once again, thank you for the recognition tonight.
Oh, my pleasure. You guys, I don't have any keys to the city, but think of this as your virtual key to the city. If you ever need anything, we'll give you the key. And thank you all for being here tonight. Please pass it along to the players. We're so impressed with what you've accomplished and grateful for the shared excitement and pride that you've brought to Broomfield. So, thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. Well, does any other member of council have an update this evening? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. This week, we... Last week, we had the opportunity to go to the Colorado Municipal League Conference, several of us did, up in Breckenridge. And it was a very good experience listening to speakers on all sorts of issues that are pertinent to our city. The one issue that... The one session I went to that I thought was very important was an update on the recently passed Producer Responsibility Bill by the state legislator that impacts recycling in Colorado. Colorado is one of the lowest recycler states in the country. We're, I think, we're 15% recycling, which is pretty sad. But this bill will allow producers to pay for recycling for all residents. So, once it's fully implemented, which is going to be a few years, 2026, I think, is when it's supposed to really start, recycling will be available to all residents free of charge. And at a time when we are going to be discussing single hauler trash here pretty soon, I think that's very important that we can have that discussion. I did want to take one second, though. I was sitting in breakfast on Friday at the conference when my phone blew up with news that I was very unhappy about. And I just wanted to say that with 4th of July coming up, it saddens me that I am now raising my daughters in a country that they have less rights than my wife, than their mother does. And that's very sad, and I want to say that we, you know, stand with the women of Colorado in the United States. And so, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, Councilmember Henkel sent her recap to me, so I'd like to read hers first, and then I'll read mine.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Henkel says, "I was thankful for the opportunity to attend the 100th Annual CML Conference in Breckenridge. It was my first time attending any CML retreat, and some highlights were the following: sessions like homelessness, how every community can leverage resources. We were able to listen to the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, a municipal judge, a policy advisor, and the housing... Boulder Housing Partners. In these programs, one person per day on average is exiting homelessness. They notated that while wraparound services are often highly funded, it's the other wheels that also need to be funded, like affordable housing and access to housing. There was a strong need to advocate at the federal level for funding. Her favorite, which was the American Cities and Immigration Integration. It was presented by Aurora staff. Their program is funded 100% by $400,000 in grant funding that serves thousands of immigrants in Aurora. They have 12-goal areas to include entrepreneurship, housing and homeownership, job skills, English learning opportunities, and other nuanced goals like working with police-fire departments to strengthen public safety and bringing immigrants together in the community through sports. Our own Broomfield Resettlement Task Force applied for a $200,000 grant and started a fund for refugees in Broomfield. While we have been able to raise over $50,000 for our families, we hope to win the grant and consult with Aurora staff in developing goals and metrics for success for Broomfield's immigrant population." Conclusion, she says, "And I got to hang out with some of the best city council members in the state. I fully enjoyed having dinners with fellow council members and watching an incredible winning Avs game with Stan, James, and Austin. After starting council during the pandemic, it's been good for my mental health, and I am so grateful to be able to serve Broomfield alongside these incredible people." That is what Councilmember Henkel had to say with regard to her trip to CML. For me, CML over the last week was also my first event and first retreat of any kind. Session, I think I've... Or the two sessions I found most interesting dealt with community engagement. One dealt with how the city of Colorado Springs was able to rehab Panorama Park down in the southeast portion, which is a less invested portion of their city. And for the tune of $7.5 million, they are bringing Panorama Park up to snuff with an opening date of August 20th. And it will serve all age groups from infants, toddlers, up to pretty much adults. They'll have bike tracks and turf fields for soccer, football, I think even baseball. They'll have an outdoor class. They'll have playgrounds for all age groups, et cetera. And I think I found those most interesting because we are elected to serve the public. We are elected to serve everyone in the city and county of Broomfield. And I think having public engagement is really what strengthens our community and makes us the city and county that we are. And I would like to further our community engagement skills, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lim?
I also attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference in Breckenridge. I followed a sustainability track in choosing my sessions. What I most enjoyed was going on a two-hour Breckenridge workforce housing tour with a small shuttle bus full of local electeds. And the reason that's connected to sustainability is in the Alta Verda apartments, which they are still constructing because these apartments will not only be workforce housing, but they will be net zero through their solar panels. And so, and they were also detailed in explaining how they got the financing from DOLA for those apartments. Another sustainability session that I attended was Climate Change and Public Works, and I'd like to recognize that our own Public Works Director, Kimberly Dahl, was a presenter there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member updates? Mayor Protem?
Since we're doing this, I also attended the CMO... CML retreat last week. And in addition to all the great programs that were mentioned, I did see a... Or attend a great luncheon that addressed the growing issue with lack of water in the West. So, I was focused really on the entire West, but also a lot of interesting points on how that impacts us here in Colorado and specifically in Broomfield. So, very good program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll go back to Councilmember Ward, who forgot an update on the roundtable.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I forgot to give an update on the June 11th Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable that I attended. Councilmember Schaaf was not able to be present at that meeting. In that meeting, we received a presentation from the Executive Director of Operations for Centennial Airport and how they navigated the process of dealing with their... for Centennial Airport and how they navigated the process of dealing with their noise issues going back to, I think, the late 90s is what they said, and how their Community Noise Roundtable formed, and some lessons learned, and kind of some steps that we might be able to take going forward to deal with the noise issues that are surrounding the immediate areas of the airport.
Thank you for that. I'm just checking online because we have Councilmember Schaaf remotely. Any hands up, Jake? On the Zoom? Nope. Okay. Well, I also attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference, which we haven't had in two years. And it was, it was amazing to be back together with other local mayors and city councils. And the hot topic in the meetings I went to was water. Obviously, it's a big deal to ensure that we have our water supply firmed up as we reach buildout. And I left feeling pretty confident that we were in a good position compared to some of our neighbors who hadn't invested early as Broomfield did with our own reservoir. So that, and then another meeting with the mayors made me realize how we've really been able to fix issues so much quicker here because we're so nimble. We're a compact county, city, home rule all in one, that we don't have a lot of the same issues as just cities who are fighting with their counties for things and such, or having to get permission. It is the perfect trifecta of efficient governance. So that's how my takeaway was, we have it really good here, and I, I'm just so excited that, you know, we have this situation. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Council's consideration of the consent agenda is next. The clerk will read all of the consent agenda items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 7A through 7E by title?
7A, Approval of Minutes from June 14, 2022, regular meeting. 7B, Resolution Number 2022-57, approving the HIPAA compliance plan for the city and county of Broomfield. 7C, Resolution Number 2022-67, authorizing and approving an agreement by and between the city and county of Broomfield and Straight Line Saw Cutting Incorporated for the 2022 Street Asphalt Patching Program. 7D, Resolution Number 2022-79, appointing the Board of Directors of Highlands Metropolitan District Number One, city and county of Broomfield, state of Colorado. 7E, Resolution Number 2022-85, authorizing and approving an agreement by and between the city and county of Broomfield and Luna V Incorporated for Information Technology Services.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments. Is there any member of the public that has comments on these agenda items? Please step up to the podium. I don't see any online. Does any member of council have comments on these agenda items? Not seeing any there either. Is there a motion by council that the recommendations contained in the staff reports for Agenda Items 7A through 7E be approved? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Councilmember, I mean, thank you. May I have a second? Councilmember Leslie?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Well, Councilmember Schaaf is joining remotely this evening, therefore we'll use a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Cohen?
Yes.
Henkel?
Jazurski?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lim?
Yes.
Lindsted?
Yes.
Marsh Holson?
Yes.
Schaaf?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We have one item for the Board of Social Services consideration this evening, acknowledging review of expenditures and electronic benefit transfers for January, February, and March 2022. The meeting of the Board of Social Services is called to order. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Anderson?
Cohen?
Here.
Henkel?
Jazurski?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Lim?
Here.
Lindsted?
Here.
Marsh Holson?
Here.
Schaaf?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Thank you. A quorum is present. Board members have a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Director Dan Casey? These three month, these, these updates fly by. It seems like just yesterday we were having the very same conversation. Mr. Casey?
Thanks, Manager Hoffman. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. I'm Dan Casey. I'm the Director of Human Services. And I am, I understand you have a pretty packed agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as I can, but I do want to summarize for you our quarterly expenditures. And as Manager Hoffman said, we try to come about every three months and provide an update on how we're doing our business. And I, I start every time by saying it's a confusing proposition sometimes because we work off of three separate fiscal years. We are in the first quarter on this report of our CCOB fiscal year. We are in the third quarter of our state fiscal year, and we're in the second quarter of our federal fiscal year. So it does become a little bit confusing and difficult to track, you know, how money rolls over. I also wanted to acknowledge my phone friend this evening, Brent Vogue, is our Fiscal Supes, Fiscal Ops Supervisor and currently acting as our Operations Manager while our Operations Manager is out. So Brent, can you wave hi to everybody? Brent puts together a lot of the work that goes into the memo that you are, that you have before you tonight, and that I'll quickly summarize. Just wanted to hit a few highlights, and I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. Our TANF, Temporary Aid for Needy Families, is up in this quarter, about 59% in clients, from 93 in the same time last year to 148 this year. Our expenditures are also up from about $52,000 in the same time last year to $83,000 this year. That's an increase of about 57%. I think we can all understand the reasons why. Our, a lot of our other benefits, like our workforce and unemployment insurance, have ended, so folks are back in a position where they need those additional funds, which will also be reflected in our SNAP numbers. Our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program are also known as our Food Assistance or Food Stamps Program. That is also up. Same time last year, we were about 1,267 recipients in the month. This month, we're at, or I'm sorry, this quarter, we're at 1,451. So about a 14% increase. You'll see that the dollar amounts are about 60% over what they were for the same time period last year, although our clients are only up 14%. Our dollars are up 60%, and that might not make a lot of sense to some folks who read the report, but that is due to max allotments and our pandemic EBT expenditures that occurred through this reporting period. The max allotments would indicate that someone that might qualify, and I'm just using an arbitrary number that I'm making up right now, but you might qualify for $200 a month in food assistance, and max allotments allowing $400 a month. So you're getting double the amount of allotment that you would normally receive based on eligibility. I'll circle back to that in a minute because that's important to remember. Medicaid, in our Medicaid enrollment, we're up also, again, about 10% from 4,800 to about 5,300 participants. We also have, what I've referred to previously in other meetings, is our Locked In Report. Locked In status is everybody that was under the pandemic emergency or the PHE, the Public Health Emergency. Anybody that was on benefit for Medicaid stayed on, and any new enrollees that were eligible remained on. So we've got a lot more users of Medicaid right now than we typically see. And that Locked In Report will be ending soon. So what I wanted to share with this body tonight is the Public Health Emergency, we've been notified by the state, will be ending soon. We do not have a date from the federal government yet on when that will occur. They're anticipating that it will either be the third quarter or the fourth quarter of this year. The reason that's important is because I talked about that max allotment in SNAP. That max allotment will end when the Public Health Emergency ends, and the Locked In Medicaid will also end. So that will create a huge workload for our staff, but more probably impactful is the impact it will have to our recipients of the benefits. So we're working ahead right now. We're taking some proactive steps to make sure people are informed, that they're updating their peak information, which is our online system, and that our staff are all educated on when this is going to occur and how this is going to occur so we can share with our recipients that information. Hopefully get them into other programs or situated in a way that the impact to them will be mitigated. Moving on to our Child Care Assistance Program, or CCAP, we've seen a steady number of CCAP participants. We average right around 55 households. That's not 55 kids, but 55 households, so that, that ends up being a little bit over 100 children that utilize that program. We've got an increase in allocation this year, and again, for pandemic emergency, and those increases in allocations paid for absences to the provider. So even though the family wasn't attending based on medical need, or maybe someone was COVID positive, the impact to that provider would be negative. So the dollars, the extra dollars in CCAP went to pay for absences to the provider, which is a very good way for our providers to stay viable. You'll see overall, our numbers increased about 10% across the board for human services. That doesn't seem like a lot, but when we're talking about roughly 7,000 people, so we see 700 people, additional people every year. And again, we do unduplicated numbers, so those are another 700 individuals that we served in the, in this year than the past. Two real quick things that I wanted to add, LEAP, which is our Low Income Energy Assistance. And as you recall, we moved to the goodwill contract, and they administer the program for us, and I promised you I would bring updates on that. LEAP is also seeing an increase, oh, I'm sorry, they're seeing a decrease in recipients of the LEAP program during this timeframe. They went from 307 last year to, or I'm sorry, 327 last year to 307 this year. And then we have seen an increase in the dollars in LEAP as well, because this year LEAP implemented a program for gas, electric, and water arrears, and those were beyond what we would typically see in the cold weather season. CAFS, which is our Child, Adult, and Family Services, more commonly referred to as Child Welfare or Adult Protection, and those numbers are staying fairly stable. We have increased our block, or I'm sorry, we have increased our core services dollars. Again, trying to stay brief, our FFPSA, or Family First Prevention Services Act, has changed the way we do funding for our child welfare programs. So we've put more effort into our core services, which are those preventative services, in hopes that we would not have as many expenditures on our FFPSA expenses, because now we are funded differently, and it's based on placements of kids. And last, I promise you, is our Adult Protective Services. We have seen probably the biggest increase in APS, or Adult Protective Services, over the last couple of years of any of our programs. We, it doesn't sound like a lot, but we went from 20 a year ago to 34 individuals that we worked with in this quarter, in the first quarter of this year. Our caseworker, that we have one full-time equivalent employee that does the casework for that, their caseload is running about 16 right now, which is even higher than some of our large counties. So we're really working on how do we balance that out for our adult protection, and then also make sure that we're providing the right number and amount of contacts and services to keep our at-risk adult population healthy and maintain their well-being. And that is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that update, Mr. Casey. We'll now proceed with public comments. Does any member of the public have any comments on this agenda item? I don't see any online. Questions from the board are next. Any board members have any questions or comments? Check over. I lost my Zoom. Let me check. Nope. Oh, Councilmember Lim?
I was interested in the large increase in the Adult Protective Services numbers. This was actually also on my mind, because one of the sessions I attended at the CML Conference was on counties, cities providing services to the increasing demographics of that age group, which all of us across Colorado would be, you know, would be facing. So do you see the increase in Adult Protective Services needs as just part of the increase of our aging, more feeble adult population, or do you see some other trend?
Thanks, Councilmember Lim. That's an outstanding question, and you hit the nail on the head. A lot of it is due to the demographics and the aging population in Broomfield. I think the other part of it is we're doing a better job of advertising and communicating our programs. Senior Services is one of our partners that does a great job of communicating to folks if there is someone in risk or at risk out there to make a call. We've, we've really promoted our, our, both our Child Welfare and our Adult Protection hotline to make sure that folks are calling in when they see somebody in need. So I would say that it's combination, but it's definitely due to the growth. And I actually have a note here, too, that our county's aging population continues to grow when we look at the demographic information.
Any other board member comments? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Casey. There being no further business before the Board of Social Services, the meeting is adjourned. And there is no business before the Board of Health this evening. The first item under Council Business is a public hearing and council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2020, 2022-84, approving the Ridge at Broomfield filing number one, replat D, PUD Amendment, final plat and site development plan. I'll now declare the public hearing open. We'll follow the city's standard public hearing procedures. First, staff will present a summary of the proposal. Next, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Then we'll ask for public comments and final comments from the applicant, and finally questions from the city council members. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And I see that Lynn Merwin is going to be the presentation. We're going back and forth, Ms. Harmon, about who was, who was going to do it, and if council could take notice that Ms. Merwin has been a, the brain trust with Anna Burton Zetti and Judy for about as long as I've been here. And you will notice she is no longer a senior planner, but she is our planning manager. Well-earned, long-deserved. She's, she's, she's going to rail me for, for doing that publicly, I can assure all of you. Ms. War, thanks for joining us tonight. Will you walk us through this item, please?
Happy to do so. Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The application this evening is for the Ridge at Broomfield Town Homes. First slide, please. The request, the specific request is for an amendment to the Ridge at Broomfield Planned Unit Development Plan, a final plat and a site development plan for 127 for sale town homes. The subject site is located in southwest Broomfield, in the Ridge at Broomfield subdivision at the southeast corner of Ridge Parkway and George Parkway. The property is 5.7 acres in size and is governed by the Ridge at Broomfield Planned Unit Development Plan. Next slide, please. The property is designated as mixed-use commercial within the Broomfield Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. The primary uses within the designated land uses include commercial, employment, and residential. The proposal is consistent with the land use map designation. The proposal is also consistent with the land use assumptions in Broomfield's long-range financial plan. Next slide, please. The proposed PUD Amendment applies solely to the subject 5.7 acre development site. As a mixed-use development, the Ridge at Broomfield is intended to develop with no more than 75% of the land area comprising a single use. The proposed PUD Amendment would allow the multifamily use to develop at 100% of the 5.7 acre site, exceeding the 75% maximum single use allowed by the current PUD. The single land use development at 100% of the site is identified as a variance in the PUD plan. The PUD Amendment also refines certain design standards related to the roof materials, allows a masonry or stone veneer on the facades of the homes, and establishes setbacks at a minimum of five feet, except where they may be attached units, which would allow internal lot lines of zero. For the final plat, this subdivides the current property into 127 residential lots and creates tracks for private open areas and alleyways, and establishes utilities and access easements necessary to serve the site. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide. The image shown here is the overall site, including two points of access from the north via George Parkway, and one access from the south via Ridge Parkway. Townhome units are accessed from the sidewalks that are provided along the perimeter and interior to the site, or from the attached garages. The development meets the minimum off-street parking requirements with the townhome garages and 20 surface parking spaces. The townhome garages-
The townhome garages comprise one and two-car garages, depending on the number of bedrooms within the unit. There is no on-street parking provided with this development. Open areas within the site include an eight-foot trail corridor planned along the eastern boundary of the site to facilitate connectivity within the area and to the neighborhood park to the northeast of this site. A dog park is provided adjacent to the trail, and a community gathering area shown at the southwest portion of the site. Let's see, according to the, sorry, drainage, as a, as an infill development, the site will make use of an existing stormwater detention pond located to the southwest of the site. So drainage is covered that way. Next slide, please. This image shows the proposed landscaping along a portion of Ridge Parkway. The landscaping includes a variety of trees, shrubs, and ornamental grasses planted in an undulating pattern along with both, along both sides of the sidewalk and into the entrance of the complex. Currently, there are approximately 48 trees that were planted along each side of the sidewalk, along the northbound lane of Ridge Parkway. During the staff review, planning requested that the developer work to preserve these trees, but the developers indicated they will be unable to preserve all the trees during construction. The plans propose to replace the trees with shrubs, and primarily with shrubs and grasses. Next slide. Okay, next slide, please. Sorry about that. These images show one of the townhome products as they would appear once constructed. Exterior lighting fixtures meet the dark sky requirements and are placed throughout the complex for the optimal safety and security of the neighborhood. And here we see the image with front doors, and then the rear images with the alleyways. And there is a configuration where the garages and the front doors appear on the same front elevation due to layout of the development. Next slide, please. There are two variances proposed with this application. The first is to allow residential land uses to develop on 100% of the site, as noted earlier. To date, the overall development has developed with three prior residential projects, two commercial office buildings, and a neighborhood park. There is one remaining parcel available to develop to the south, comprising approximately 11.7 acres. The second variance is to reduce the private open area required in the site from 40% to 39%. And just to point out, the private open area is different from public land dedication, and that is typically trails, pocket parks, things of that nature that remain private on the site, whereas the public land dedication is landed dedicated to Broomfield. And that's a totally different requirement that developers proposing to meet the PLD obligation through a cash-in-lieu fee totaling $817,723. And that's paid at the time of building permit. And that is, you know, one of three ways we typically see PLD met, either through a full dedication, a partial dedication with cash-in-lieu as the balance, or a full cash-in-lieu. Let's see, sorry. The developer proposes to meet the inclusionary housing requirements through cash-in-lieu payment. This approach is different than originally proposed at the concept review stage, when the project was expected to provide approximately 14 affordable onsite units. The alternative approach to paying a cash-in-lieu fee is permissible, optioned through, offered by code, and the housing fee is calculated at the time of the building permit and factors in the estimated sales price of the properties at that time. Staff has not identified any key issues with the proposal. There is a subdivision agreement that has been prepared and executed by the developer. The agreement provides for the orderly installation of public and private improvements, the payment of certain fees, such as the inclusionary housing and PLD fee, and disclosures to the future home buyers of the proximity of the site to the airport and Broomfield's detention and training facility, as well as the obligation for maintenance of certain common areas. The Land Use Review Commission reviewed this application on May 9th and recommended approval four to two, with the condition that the applicant consider an increase to the 15% brick veneer required on the building facades. The application has not changed their application, citing the increased cost to do so. Noticing was accomplished per the requirements, requirements of the municipal code, and this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manager Merwin. Next is the applicant's presentation. Just as we ask our staff to keep their presentations brief, I ask the applicant to be concise in their presentation. And will the representative please identify themselves for the record prior to beginning your presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and councilmembers, Alan Cunningham with PCS Group, 200 Kalamath Street, Denver, 80223. First off, on behalf of Remington Homes, wanted to thank you all for being here to consider this application. And also a quick thank you to the Colorado Avalanche for winning on Sunday, so they're not playing game seven right now. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the applicant. Remington Homes is a local home builder, based out of Arvada. They, between them, have over 50 years of successful home building, mainly focused on the west side of the metro area. And I think over 100 years of management experience with their senior management staff. Next slide, please. Just a slide showing you a list of some of the different projects that Remington's been involved in since their inception. And as you can see on there, they've built over 3,000 homes and developed over 6,000 lots during that time. Next slide, please. We'll go quick on this one, because staff's done a good job of identifying the site. As you can see, it's, it's west of the airport and south of West 120th Ave as part of the Ridge at Broomfield PUD. Next slide, please. So this slide gives you a different perspective of the context, seeing the site, which is highlighted in yellow, and how it generally, it's a little bit out there to the west, but it kind of acts as an infill property, as you can see, surrounded by the office development to the east, to the right of the site, some infill detached, single-family homes in the northeast corner. And then kind of as we move left, the neighborhood park that exists, kitty corner to the site, touchstone apartments directly north of the site at the top of the screen, and then the Stonegate Apartments to the west of the property, left of the screen. And then, as staff mentioned, there's a vacant parcel of about 11.7 acres remaining within the Ridge at Broomfield. Next slide. So as mentioned, it's part of the Ridge at Broomfield PUD. The exhibit on the right is actually a former amendment that was done on the property. The important takeaway being that there's still an allotted 240 multifamily units permitted within the Ridge at Broomfield. And the application before you tonight is requesting 127 townhomes, which is about 53% of that allotment as part of this amendment. Next slide, please. So this site, as staff mentioned, highlights the where Lot 5 exists, which is in the southern portion of the PUD. And the amendment request that we have in only affects that lot, not the remainder of the PUD. And then, as mentioned, within there, there's, the, the request is to allow 100% single use type within this parcel, because obviously, given the small size of it, to mix in different uses would be difficult. It adds in some bulk and dimension standards that are applicable to townhomes. And then the two other requests were the slight reduction from the 40% open space down to 39, which the, the plan is currently proposing. And then an amendment to reduce the amount of masonry, which is currently in the PUD at 50%, and the request is to reduce it down to 15%. And I'll touch on that again in a, in a moment on a different slide. Next slide, please. So this one, plan view of that bird's eye that you saw before, showing how the site kind of is infill between all these other uses, and showing the proximity to the park to the north, which, as you can see, the, the park and trail corridor to the, to the north of that park equates to 6.7 acres as compared to our site, which is 5.7. So we're excited about the amenity potential of having this neighborhood park that, that is an amenity for any of the people in, in the Ridge at Broomfield. And then also to the south, you can see an existing community garden in the community. So with this graphic, I think it's clear why staff had asked for us to include a regional trail connection on the east side of the property, between that community garden to the south and up to the neighborhood park to the north. Next slide, please. Just a couple images from out onsite showing you the neighborhood park as it exists today. Next slide, please. So same scale as the other one, where we've overlaid the proposed development on this parcel. Again, just to show it in the context of the, the surrounding development and what's there, that it does act sort of as an infill site. And then you can also see on the very bottom of the page where that 11.7 acre remaining parcel is that's owned by others and slated for future development. Next slide, please. So zooming in on the site, these are proposed as all for sale townhomes. There's two different product types that you can see by the color scheme. So the, the lighter colors interior to the property are what we've been calling the back-to-back townhomes. Those are the ones that, that were mentioned as, as functioning, sort of as front-loaded, with the front doors and the garage doors on the same side of the units. And then the more orange-colored buildings around the perimeter that front to George Parkway and Ridge Parkway are more of what you might envision as a traditional row home, with the front doors and front architecture fronting those streets, and then alley-loaded garages in the back. You can see the approximate unit split. It's about a third, a third, a third, between one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, a little bit skewed to the one and two bedrooms, a little higher percentage. And you can also see the unit size breakdown, which is a little under 900 square feet on the small side, up to about 1,600 square feet in the three-bedroom units. Next slide, please. As mentioned, Remington's committing at this point in time to, to meet the affordable housing component through cash-in-lieu. But with that said, they'll continue to work with the HAC. As I'm sure all of you know, construction costs, supply chain demands, everything's thrown a wrench in construction costs currently. So at this point, committing to meet that with cash-in-lieu is allowed by the ordinance. But they'll continue to work with HAC to see if there's a way to build those units by the time they get to building permit. Next slide, please. Remington's committed to sustainability in their projects. On this one, the homes that are included will be Energy Star certified. They'll also be Air Plus certified, and they'll be Hers Energy Efficient certified by a, a third party that studies the units. They'll also be wired such that all of the garages will be EV-capable, and a number of them, I believe it's 13 right now, will be EV-ready for charging stations in the garages. And then we're also including an EV charging station onsite. And there was some mention of water earlier from the CML. And from a water conservation perspective, we're definitely looking at that. And interior of the units, things like tankless water heaters and low-flow fixtures will be used. And exterior, we're doing xeric landscaping, minimizing the amount of turf to the amenity area in the entrance. And then there'll be efficient drip system for the rest of the landscaping. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, one of our requests in the PUD amendment is a reduction from 50% that's required in there currently for masonry down to 15. And we believe this request is not unfounded. The images shown here are the built Richmond Cityscape, single-family detached product that's beside the neighborhood park in the northeast portion of the community. As you can see in the image on the right, there's no masonry on the sides of the buildings, nor along the back of the buildings down the alley. And the image on the left does show masonry integrated on the fronts of the units. I don't know the exact percentage. But if you look at it, it's probably 25 to 40% along those fronts. And so when you view them as a whole, again, I don't know what the exact percentage is, but it's, it's clearly greatly reduced from 50%. And if you sort of just add up the perimeter of the building without that masonry on the backs or sides, I would suspect it's more in the 10% range. But with that said, I think it's also an attractive product that integrates masonry within the architecture style. And we believe that with that precedent, we want to do the same thing and view that the, the masonry should be viewed as part of the architectural design and the aesthetic, not trying to achieve just an arbitrary 50% that was in the, the previous PUD due to the additional costs that it would bring. Next slide. So I'll just quickly run through these. These are the back-to-back units. You can see the articulation on them, the incorporation of private patio spaces, the mix of materials with masonry on the lower floor, and highlighting the entrances. Next slide, please. So these are the ends of those back-to-back units. Again, with stepping and articulation, the balconies, the masonry highlighting the entrances, as well as wrapping the corners on the lower level. Next slide. These are the, what the tandem townhomes, we call them, more of the row home, where the, the front of the elevations face the street. So you can see that base layer of masonry, as well as the accents around the doors, identifying where those front doors are. And again, the stepping and articulation horizontally and vertically to add to the aesthetic of the units. Next slide. These are the rears of those townhomes, masonry on the base layer around the garages. These are the ones that are on the alley. And then some more stepping and, and where the patios fall close to the end units. And next slide. And these are the, the sides, kind of the end of the, the tandem buildings, masonry wrapping on the base layer again, the articulation, especially near the front corner. So there's, there is quite a bit going on, even for such a small elevation being the side. Next slide. So just quickly highlighting the central amenity space. This one's set up as, and it's sort of an adult gathering space, seating area, some outdoor games with ping pong tables, some cornhole, small turf area. And on the north side, the upper part of the page, you can see there's a sidewalk connection, and that does bisect the site going east to west, and connects over to the, the north-south trail that's on the eastern side of the property. Next slide. So there's just a few images here. This is near the entry, looking in towards that amenity area. Next slide. Just a bird's eye of the, that central gathering area that you saw before. Next slide, please. This is over on the eastern edge. You can see the dog park on the right side of the image. My apologies, I'm not sure why it shifted a little bit there. But the, on the very right side of the page is where the, the north-south trail connection, the eight-foot wide trail, connects through the site, and then a small dog park integrated per city request. It's, you know, we are somewhat limited, I'm not sure. You'd bring your Great Danes here, but I think for, for smaller dogs within the complex, this would be appropriate. And then there is a, a dog park a couple miles to the north in Broomfield, and the large Westminster, one a couple miles to the south. Next slide, please. So this is the corner of Ridge Parkway and George Parkway, where the entrance would be just, we chose this one to give you an idea of the, the, the front architecture, as well as some of the side at that entrance. And overall, we feel that we're, there is some density on the site, but we're trying to do it in an aesthetically pleasing manner, with an appropriate amount of masonry, and be able to address some attainability with these units, and then take advantage of the amenities that exist within the Ridge at Broomfield, such as the large neighborhood park that's kitty-corner from us. Next slide. So with that, I thank you for your time this evening. There's several members of our team here, from the architect, civil engineer, to Remington Homes, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments. Does any member of the public have comments on this agenda item? If so, please come up to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you have three minutes. We're friendly.
I'm Chris Smith, my wife Helen. We live in Cityscapes, we just moved to Broomfield. Thanks for allowing us, council, mayor, staff, to address these neighborhood concerns that we have regarding Ridge's proposed townhomes. Our neighborhood in the Ridge's district seeks to maintain our precedent of green and open environment. It's been cultivated over 22 years. The existing properties are low-density, include a dedicated public trail along 128 in the green fields of Ridge Park. Even the office buildings in Broomfield Detention Center, our neighbor, are greened out with generous setbacks, mature trees shading wide walkways. The Ridge's proposal is out of tune with our neighborhood. They propose to reduce setbacks to the street from 25 feet to five feet, 5,000% change. When asked to consider modifying the density, they just said no. They plan to chop down 52 mature public right-of-way trees and replace them with six saplings. When asked to do better, they just said no. When asked to do better, they just said no. When the developer was asked to consider modifying the roofs and masonry, as we've heard, to match the neighborhood, they said no. When asked to include low income units, they said, no, thank you. We'll write a check if we build it. The proposed density for the ridges townhomes exceeds any property built in the neighborhood. Furthermore, the remaining 11 acre vacant tract holding the community garden would be limited in the future as to how many units could be built there. On June 20th, Ms. Hammer's email to me stated the proposed units would be between 889 and 1514. In the planning summary, it says something different, maybe 600 square feet, but I guess it's going to be the larger. In any case, the compact units are small. How small? I'd ask you to review Remington's current project in downtown Superior with its town square location, street parking, sidewalk, located AC units. It's located in the middle of retail, employment centers and mass transit. Physically, it's inclusionary. The ridges has no retail, nor any foreseeable retail, nor is it served by mass transit. Inclusionary by any definition means affordable. The developer specifically refused to target lower income buyers and home prices could range between 400 and 600 grand. The Urban Land Institute, which I was a member of, would not define this as an inclusionary project and it should not be labeled as such. The proposed ridges have a lot of ruffles. Greenery and setback norms are destroyed. The project is writing checks totaling 800,000, allowing it to bypass Broomfield requirements on both public land dedication and income set asides. Does cash in lieu of PLD justify paving over the green area? And did I mention they'll chop down 52 trees? No mass transportation access for residents, so no mitigation of greenhouse issues. Respectfully, we ask at your table to propose development plans until these concerns are fully and faithfully addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, questions from city council are next. Well, does the applicant have any final comments first, based on the public comment?
So yes, I would like to address a couple of those. Obviously, you know, we're not trying to hide from the fact that there's density on the project. We believe that it's one of the ways to be able to bring more workforce townhomes to the city of Broomfield and more attainable price points underneath the averages that are within the city. You know, there is a six acre neighborhood park adjacent to the site and within the community that is the majority of the open space for all of the development within the neighborhood. With respect to the trees, the trees that are being removed that are currently behind the sidewalk, just for clarity, those aren't in the right way. They're on the private property and they're actually about 90% of them are within a gas line easement that exists on the property. So I'm not sure how they got there in the first place, being within that easement, but they could be gone tomorrow if the gas line needs to come in and work on that. So we'll, we'll work on it to replace the vegetation as much as we can. There are some grading and utility constraints along the front of those units, as you can imagine. I just wanted to clarify that those aren't in the right way. And, you know, as acknowledged, the units, they're not huge. Again, trying to address some of that missing metal and bring a different product type to the city so that people can afford these houses. And then with the masonry request, I think, you know, I already touched on that and how the precedent, I believe, has already been set within the rigid Broomfield. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go to questions from council next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? I have council member Ward first.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is, I guess, a question for staff. I know it was mentioned in the summary that currently the PUD only allows either 200 or 300 total units of some capacity and they're asking for 157, I believe, 127, I'm sorry. If the developer for the remaining 11 acres wanted to build whatever the, build more than what the difference is between their 127 and the allotted amount, would they be able to just ask for a variance and council could approve or deny however that particular council feels?
They could either propose to amend, the best way to do that would be to propose to amend the PUD, probably just a PUD text amendment to request additional units on the property to the south.
Okay. Perfect. My next question is in regards to the, I guess, walkability of the area. The ridge is not very well connected trail wise to the rest of Broomfield on the south side. You have to cross 120th slash highway 128 to get over to the next trail that ends at Eldorado Boulevard and highway 128. But there is no clear path or clear crossing to connect either of those two. Was that something that the developer maybe contemplated or is that something that staff has been looking at to connect those two areas of Broomfield?
Ms. Merwin? By default, everyone is kind of looking at each other like, okay, who's gonna take this one?
Yes. When the ridge, the residential developments on the north side of the ridge developed, each of those put in their portion of the trail along the south side of 128 there. And it does end on the east side of the ridge and then the property, at least on the south side of 128, is no longer in Broomfield proper. That's the Verve property, the property known as the Verve, which is in Jefferson County, so we don't control that. There was a plan at one point to have a regional trail along that whole corridor, but I believe that's been tabled at this time. So we're really at kind of the mercy, for lack of a better word, of the Verve to do their part of any trail along or sidewalk along highway 128. I have heard that CDOT has some plans to widen 128 and to make improvements along that roadway. I, I'm sorry, I don't know if it includes a trail or not. I just, I know that the roadway itself would be widened.
It does not at this point.
Could Broomfield request CDOT to look at that as part of their study?
I just, I don't, I don't want to start getting text messages and, which, which happens frequently as soon as I say something. It's under review from CDOT regardless. I mean, part, part of their, part of their mission is connectivity, bike, health, safety and all of those other components. So I'm not saying they would never entertain it. It's just at this point in the preliminary stages, that isn't part of the widening plan.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll follow my own research on that particular project. My next question is in regards to some of the sustainability aspects of this project. Forgive me if I missed this in the project, in the presentation. Were you guys planning on using any sort of solar?
So the current plan is not to provide solar, but the electrical design in the houses will be wired such that they could be added at a later date if the homeowners so chose to do so.
Okay. Is there a particular reason why right now you chose not to put that in right off the bat? I'm guessing it's probably just cost.
Good evening. Matt Kavanaugh, Remington Homes, 5740 Old Wazworth Boulevard, Arvada, Colorado. It's a function of cost, so it's also a function of a new product that we're, we're building here. And it's, the roof lines are a lot different and it doesn't necessarily have a product, a solar product that dovetails with this design just yet. So we are PV ready. It's the best we could do at this point. So that's our, that's our effort. And I think as technologies develop, we'll be able to implement those in future projects. So.
Okay. Thank you. My next question is in regards to the EV ready charging stations and I think you said all of the garages or at least most of them?
I'm going to mess this up, but they're all capable.
Yeah, EV capable.
Correct. Yep.
For the two garage, you'll have to forgive me if this is just a symbol of my ignorance on the subject. Will those, will the charging infrastructure be able to support two cars charging at once with how you have set up the, I think, 200 amp? Or is that only good for one car at a time?
It should be fine for two. Yeah. Yeah. As long as every other appliances in the house isn't full blown at the same time.
All righty. I think for the time being, that is all my questions, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you. Just had a couple of questions to clarify, but one real quick one. What does EV capable mean? I don't, it may have been in the memo, but just for my understanding.
It means that the units wired such with proper amperage and voltage so that the plugs, plugs in the garage can handle a charger.
It has a 220 in the garage?
Yeah.
That's what, there is a 220 outlet?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to, in reading the memo, I wanted to echo, I think, something the speaker mentioned. And maybe this is a question for staff. Sorry. There was a reference in terms of the public land dedication. The memo says, given the size and location of the property and the amount of onsite dedication required, the city and developer negotiated 100% cash and lieu contribution. And I'm just curious, why would we want to go that route? It's, it is a high density development of townhomes, meaning people who don't have any yards. And so to me, it doesn't necessarily reflect the spirit of what we'd like in Broomfield is that there be some green space, though I recognize the cash and they will help our open space goals. But I'm just curious, why did we go that route to negotiate cash and lieu versus finding some means of open space? Or park?
So I can speak for the city's part, the staff part. Typically for public land dedication, we look for a minimum dedication of three acres in order for the city to take on the maintenance of that facility. It's just not efficient for our staff to come out and maintain a half acre publicly dedicated parcel or a one acre parcel. And as mentioned, the property is only 5.7 acres. So the size of a dedication that would become the city's obligation to maintain is not an ideal location, even though there is a park nearby. It was felt that the park could, could serve this neighborhood and quite honestly, if there's to be more land made available for open area, that would be best preserved in private maintenance and ownership. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. Staff wouldn't object to that.
Is there a formula for how many, the size of the park is to the, above it, how many people per acre? Is it sufficient for what we, development that's there and what's coming?
I believe there is a formula. I do not know what that is offhand, but I would, I would guess that this park is adequate to serve this area. Or we would have asked for further amenities within the park or something to augment the usability of it.
Councilmember Cohen, if I may, and we're, we, as we walk, as we walk through these developments, the planning department is never in the position and we don't want them to be in the position. So they don't negotiate any of these business development agreements, nor do they weigh in on whether it is a feasible development or something that is conducive to overall Broomfield. So when you see the word negotiate, it has a very different meaning with regards to planning than it does say for Mr. Romine and our business development agreements in the back. So it's more of a calculated methodology versus a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
The collaboration with staff is really what it is. Staff and the developer collaborating to find an optimal solution.
Okay. And the other question that dealt with the issue of affordable, I'm curious what happened because initially apparently there was affordable housing, an 80% AMI. The housing authority made a request or suggested that they'd rather not have it all be one bedroom. And then here we are with no affordable housing. And granted a cash and lieu payment, though, the concern there is obviously if you built the affordable housing, it would happen a lot quicker than what the housing authority can develop. But I'm just curious how that came to be, that we have a high density development, but nothing affordable in terms of what people would think since it's 400 to 600,000 per unit?
Good evening. Kurt Heinlein. I work with Remington Homes and I worked extensively with Jeff Romine and his team to, to try to work through this and really understand the ordinances. And the first time we did come before you guys, our plan was to try to build these units and provide them onsite. What's happened since then, not only did we dig deep into the ordinances and understand exactly how the calculations are made, but we've also had a lot of turbulence economically. Interest rates, as everyone in this room is aware of, are, have almost doubled in the last year and housing prices continue to escalate. So when we talk the 80% AMI that's used in this calculation, I'll just give you a quick example because it makes it really easy to understand. The one bedroom unit, the maximum price in 2021 was $330,000. Well, this year, when we ran the calculation with the new interest rates, the estimated value was $300,000. So a reduction of 10% of the max that we could actually charge for those units. And so that math, based on what we were looking at last year, was not easy to make happen. And when that math changed that dramatically with the interest rates changing, we decided that the cash in lieu was the best option at this time. It's, we are still looking forward to working with Jeff and his team. We've told them that. We, I understand that there are studies being done to, to look at the possibility of how we could potentially work with you and the city of Broomfield to, to have more affordable housing. And the fact of the matter is, is that when you look at the cash in lieu, we can pick that option and be approved hopefully, and we wouldn't necessarily have to come back to city council for any type of approval. We understand that we can work with the city and potentially in six months, a year from now, when we're going to building permit, if the ordinances have changed, if the conditions economically have changed, we can elect still to build those units. So we're not taking it off the table and we still are interested in working with the city to do that. But based on the turbulences I discussed on the economic front, that's really why this gone sideways.
Thank you. And just one follow up first half, just on the previous question, just for my edification. Since there's another parcel that probably we developed, how do you avoid the scenario where each parcel is too small to have a public land dedication, so we end up with none? When, in total, if they'd been developed altogether, there would be something?
We discuss it at the concept review and get a really clear indication of what's desired. But yeah, if, if we know that it's important to council to have an additional park out there, we can make that a priority moving forward.
Thank you. I just think it's an issue with having multi, multifamily housing such as this, whether no one has green space or a yard and the amount of pressure that puts on public parks in the area if they're close enough. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, councilmember. Next is councilmember Lim.
Yes. I had a question for staff. So the, Remington used the example of Cityscape's reduced masonry to support their own claim that they should be able to reduce their masonry percentage also. Did, was Cityscape given, awarded a PUD amendment to reduce their masonry? That's a historical question that seems, because it's not following the PUD.
So Cityscape did do a PUD amendment because we did not at that time and the PUD had not. And the PUD had not anticipated single-family detached at the time. So an amendment came through with that development to allow the use and establish the design standards specifically for that. And quite honestly, I don't recall if it was a variance per se, or if they wrote it into the PUD from the onset. Most likely, it was written into the PUD from the onset because they were creating a PUD essentially for that use. But it is possible that the, the prior, the, the original PUD or the original residential PUD stated 50%, and then Cityscape reduced it with their PUD amendment, similar to what is being proposed here.
Have all the lots had reduction of that 50% masonry requirement?
I don't think that the touchstone development did. I think they probably had closer to 50% out there. I can't say for sure. You know, we could do a little research while we're here and get back to you on that. I, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, state with certainty what I think happened.
Okay.
So if you'd like, we can do that.
Was, I don't know if this is the applicant or staff answer. Was there any discussion? I mean, obviously, the, the LERC approved it, this development four to two with the condition that the applicant discussed with staff increasing the masonry. And I hear the residents of Cityscape are concerned about that. So I guess I want, what was, what was the discussion from staff's perspective about increasing that masonry? Was there, and what happened to hit me was as I saw the layout, was there any discussion that the outer-built townhomes, the one-bedrooms are in the core? I mean, maybe you don't increase the masonry on the one-bedrooms, but you increase the masonry on the ones along the outer perimeter of the complex?
I'm going to have to ask Ms. Hammer to come and help me on that one because she was staff having that discussion. But I suspect what we, one of the things we typically do is just ask the developer to respond in writing how they proposed to do that. But whether it was specifically discussed to do an enhanced elevation, what we would call an enhanced elevation on the most exposed sides. Judy, did, did that happen? Do you want to take that question or give me a nod?
During the review, we, with Andrew Collins, who's, who was the urban designer, he did make comments regarding design of the buildings to try to get them into compliance with the PUD design guidelines.
Okay, thank you. My other question is about the parcel to the south. The, the memo says that that's zoned for commercial. Is, does staff anticipate that that will stay commercial? Or do they anticipate that that's going to end up residential?
Well, before this week, I would have anticipated it would go commercial. I mean, it was, stay, stay residential, sorry. However, we did get a pre-application request this week for, I believe it's a flex light industrial-type building. So that's an indication that someone is interested in doing that use on that property. Whether that goes forward or not is hard to say at this time.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other councilmember questions at this point? Don't see any online. Oh, there you are, Councilmember Schaaf.
But thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the applicant for, for being with us tonight. So I have a couple of questions for the applicant as well as the, as well as staff. So this is probably more of a question for staff to start out with. How does the increase from 75% to the 100% single-use impact, the single-use going to residential only, impact the long-range financial plan? I, I, I'm not quite sure I was clear with that in the memo.
Thank you, Councilmember. The, the increase would not impact the long-range financial plan because the, the overall PUD, PUDs, PUD and PUD amendments covering the site allow for additional residential. So those assumptions factor in the residential, and it's adequate to, for the assumptions in the long-range financial plan. So we don't see an impact there.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess with, with this project, I've always looked at it as the possibility of a mixed-use project. And we've continued to get single-use projects here in this area. And so, you know, I'm curious, you know, from the developer's standpoint, why we didn't get, you know, more of a mixed-use project for this lot?
Councilman Schaaf, I guess I would say from Remington's standpoint, we put this property under contract. Remington is a residential builder. We've never actually built any other type of product. So for us, when we targeted this site and put it under contract, the intent was always to do 100% residential.
Okay, thank you for that. This is more of a question for staff. Council's heard a lot about the number of residential units coming online in the next two to three years, and I was curious, are these units accounted for in those numbers that we've heard about in the past months?
Councilmember Schaaf, they are not.
Okay, so when we're, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a minor blip, right? So when we're talking about 6,000 units coming online in two to three years, this is another 175 or so. So it's a small blip. And this kind of goes with my next question, which is, one of the primary issues the Broomfield community is concerned about is open lands. This decrease is just 40% down to 30%, so it's just a minor blip. And I just wanted to get confirmation from the developer. Can you make that 1% happen? Or is this just not going to be something that you can do?
I guess I would respond to that, Councilman Schaaf, in the following manner. I, you know, there was, there's a couple of things that were kind of intermingled here in this conversation. One is the density question, and the other is open space and affordability. And we actually talked about this extensively too with the, the LERC Commission and the question about the affordability. And at the end of the day, we are trying to build a product here. It is a smaller square footage than a lot of things you'll see in the West Metro area. And we are trying to, to provide a type of product that is more affordable. It's hard, as when we're talking products that could potentially be in the 400,000s, how that's affordable in this day and age. But that's the day and age we live here in, in the West Metro Denver area, right? So, you know, when we talk about reducing or adding more masonry, or reducing the density, or adding more green area, all of those come hand-in-hand with costs being driven up, us needing to spend more for the units and charge more for the units. And so in our point of view, as much as we understand that there is a need for more green space in the, in the area, there is a park right across the street. We create, created a trail for connectivity. In the southwest portion of the site, there was almost 12 acres dedicated, which has detention areas that's kind of open, very grasses and things like that. The $817,000 that is being used for the parkland dedication could potentially be used in this region to help include more things as, as far as trails and parks in an area that's not really even being utilized. So just a couple of points there. Sorry, I was answering a little bit more than what you just asked, but I, I think the, when we talk about these items, I, I understand Mr. Smith's when he says that it seems like we said no to these, this, 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 and the other. Well, the fact of the matter is that we did discuss all these items with staff. We can include more masonry, but the point of showing that the Cityscape's product was not to show that we're doing more than they are, but that our product isn't necessarily completely out of line with the other products that are in that, that development. The inclusionary housing, we're not, trying not to be inclusionary. This is not a, it's, what we see is an affordable product for the West Metro area. It's not a low-income product either. So I think there's some things that are being said that we're, we did try to work, and we're trying to work to provide a product that is, in my view, and Remington Homes' view, necessary in this region, and we hope that you guys agree. Thank you.
And thank you for that information. And can you remind me the, the price point for these townhomes?
You know, that's always a tricky question. We are probably only going to be able to have units ready for purchase in, in 2024 at this point. Right now, we're looking anywhere from one-bedrooms in the 400s ranges and the three-bedrooms up to 600. But again, the, the, that's all going to depend on the market and where economy's at and everything else like that. So nothing's set, but that's kind of the general frame we're looking at.
Okay, thanks. You know, the, the, I'm the council member for the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable. And, and with this, where this project is specifically located, that noise from the airport is going to generate more so than something that was closer to the airport, just because it's within that kind of ring around the airport. So, you know, I appreciate that the developer is going to be committed, committed to enhancing the sound mitigation measures. But I guess the piece that I'm, that I'm wondering about is the disclosure. And when that disclosure is going to be delivered to those prospective buyers, is it going to be delivered upfront when those buyers go to look at these townhomes? Or is this something that's going to be buried within their closing documents, which potentially they aren't going to see until it's too late for them to make a critical decision on their purchase?
Sure. This is Matt Kavanaugh with Remington Homes. Now, we'll, we'll commit to providing that notice at the time that someone writes a contract. And then they will have to sign that, and it'll become record of their title when they close.
Okay, so when, so when you say the rights of contract, is that, that's going to be the, the furthest upfront signing document that somebody would sign?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And any chance that you could move that even further into the conversation in terms of the, the notice of the space, that there is a note on there that this is in close proximity to the airport and there's noise issues around this property, something, something of that? I'm not trying to spell out the exact, you know, document or wordage for you, but just getting that further into the conversation so that people are well aware that this is something that they should take in consideration.
Sure. I mean, we, we can, we can commit to, you know, in the early discussions before a person writes a contract, that they understand its location next to the detention facility and also the airport. Yes.
Okay, I appreciate.
Yep.
Thank you. And that's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Any other councilmember questions? All right, next is council's consideration, a proposed resolution 2022-84. Will the clerk please read proposed resolution number 2022-84 by title?
11A Public Hearing Resolution Number 2022-84, authorizing and approving the bridge at Broomfield filing number one, replat D, PUD amendment, final plat and site development plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Ward.
I move that resolution number 2022-84 be adopted.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. There you go. Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a, a good development. I'm happy that you guys are providing for-sale units, which we have been missing from a lot of more recent proposals to come forward before council. I appreciate the density because in order to have good transit, you need density. And this is well on the way to help provide that. With regard to the, the open space, you know, you are next to both the Great Western Reservoir Open Space, the Colorado Hills Open Space to the south, as well as Boulder County's Open Space just to the north across Highway 128. I use that quite often when I was a resident over at Summit Flatirons. It might not be Broomfield's open space, but residents definitely have access to some level of open space. And, you know, I think the change of materials that they're requesting from the 50% down to 15% adds a different level of character. And I think any healthy neighborhood has a variety of material use and style and not just be some cookie-cutter-looking development. So that is all I have, and I...
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Style points. Anyone else? Any other discussion? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cohen?
Yes.
Hinkle? Jazursky?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lim?
Yes.
Lindsted?
Yes.
Marsh Holson?
Yes.
Schaaf?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Before we move on to 11B, we need to reconvene the Board of Social Services and approve item 8A, my fault, a resolution acknowledging the board's review of expenditures as conveyed during Mr. Casey's presentation. So will the clerk please, oh, do I have to reconvene the Board of Health because I closed the hearing? Ms. Rogers?
I don't think you have her adjourned.
I said, I did say it. I did say there being no further business. Let's do it, okay. I call the, the meeting of the Board of Social Services back to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cohen?
Here.
Hinkle? Jazursky?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Lim?
Here.
Lindsted?
Here.
Marsh Holson?
Here.
Schaaf?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Anderson?
This last one. Thank you. We have a quorum still. Will the clerk please read proposed resolution number 2022-76-BSS by title?
8A Resolution Number 2022-76-BSS, acknowledging review of expenditures and electronic benefit transfers for January, February, and March 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Lindsted?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward?
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? I just want to give my apologies to Mr. Casey, who left and it looks like he had to come back. Will the clerk please re, please call the roll for the Board of Health? I mean, it's the Board of Social Services. Script says health. We're so many boards.
Anderson? Cohen?
Yes.
Hinkle? Jazursky?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lim?
Yes.
Lindsted?
Yes.
Marsh Holson?
Yes.
Schaaf?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Have a good night, Mr. Casey. Saying there is no further business, before the Board of Social Services, the meeting is adjourned. Our next item under council business this evening is the public hearing and council's consideration on second and final reading, proposed ordinance number 2180, rezoning certain land known as Broomfield Business Center filing number one, replat B tract A, from BPUD to open lands and public facilities district. I'll now declare the public hearing open, and council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Ms. Werman is up again.
Thank you. Good evening again. Next slide, please. The subject proposal is for the rezoning of a 3.52-acre tract of land situated within the Broomfield Business Center subdivision boundary area. The property is located directly north of the Northwest Parkway and to the west of South 96th Street. The proposed rezoning is from BPUD or Planned Unit Development District to the Open Lands and Public Facilities District, OPLF. The subject tract is intended to be used as a passive park, the details for which will be provided in future, in a future permit application. The property is regulated by a conservation easement and an intergovernmental agreement between the City and County of Broomfield, the City of Louisville, the City of Lafayette, and Boulder County. These documents specify that the subject property may only be used for open space or passive park perp- or passive park purposes. All the parties to this agreement have been notified of the rezoning request in support of the easement agreement terms, and the current zoning of PUD with no approved plan only permits the property to be used for agricultural purposes, not a park. So the request to rezone to open lands and public facilities will allow for the public passive park use. Next slide, please. The property is designated on the comprehensive plan as open lands and public, quasi-public facilities, and is consistent with this designation. Next slide, please. Here are some representative elements of what the park could look like, although it's not intended to have a paved parking or quite a formal edge of landscaping, but in general, the park is expected to have trail, seating, and up to four parking spaces, and be very passive in nature. Next slide, please. There was a neighborhood meeting held, and I'm afraid I don't recall the date. Was there a neighborhood meeting? Oh, sorry. It was not required. That's why I can't recall the date. So next slide, please. I think this concludes my presentation.
It's so short. I didn't know what to do. I knew this would be a quick item that we could breeze through. All right. So next is public comment time. We'll now proceed with public comments. If you'd like to speak in person, come to the podium. And if you're online, or you're not online. So, questions from city council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? See, I was right. Excellent. There being no further comments, I'm personally excited that this park is finally getting into a park. So next is council's consideration of Proposed Ordinance Number 2180 on second and final reading. Will the clerk please read Proposed Ordinance Number 2180 by title?
11B Public Hearing Ordinance Number 2180 An Ordinance Rzoning Certain Land Known As Broomfield Business Center Filing Number One Replat B Tract A From BPUD To Open Lands And Public Facilities, OLPF District. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Over here, Councilmember Lindsted.
Thank you, Mayor. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Hinkle? Jazurski? Leslie?
Yes.
Lim?
Yes.
Lindsted?
Yes.
Marsh Holson?
Yes.
Schaaf?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson? Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you all so much for the really succinct item. Let's go ahead and take our 10-minute break now at 7:56, so we'll resume at 8:06. Thank you, everyone.
And we're back. Thank you all. Our next item under council business this evening is Emergency Ordinance Number 2183, Amending Title VIII of the Broomfield Municipal Code to Add Open Burning Restrictions. Per 6.8 of the Broomfield Charter, an emergency ordinance may be approved by council when needed for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, or welfare. An emergency ordinance can be approved after one reading and goes into effect eight days after passage. Because emergency ordinances become law faster than other ordinances, the emergency ordinance must be formally introduced by a unanimous minus-one vote of the council members present. Typically, introduction requires a motion and a second. So this is, the first step is just to get this introduced. Will the clerk please read Proposed Emergency Ordinance Number 2183 by title?
11C, Emergency Ordinance Number 2183, an ordinance amending Title VIII of the Broomfield Municipal Code to Add Open Burning Restrictions.
Thank you. Before we start the staff presentation and discussion, I'll ask for a motion to introduce Emergency Ordinance Number 2183, Councilmember Marshall.
So moved.
So moved, okay. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
I'll second the motion.
Are there any questions from council specifically on introducing this ordinance as an emergency ordinance? Okay, moving on. We'll now take a vote on introducing Emergency Ordinance Number 2183. If this fails, Ordinance 2183 can be considered tonight on first reading, and staff will schedule a second reading in the future. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jazurski? Leslie?
Yes.
Lim?
Yes.
Lindstedt?
Yes.
March Holson?
Yes.
Schaaf?
He had to leave.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson? Cohen?
Here.
Pinkel?
All right, well, that does pass unanimously, so we made the threshold for that. So council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. Christina Penya-Helm is going to introduce the item, or actually, I'm not sure whether it is Chief Hempelman or not, but we did want to preface this, the emergency ordinance, with the critical nature of fireworks coming for the Fourth of July. We're going to have a lot of social media outreach and engagement and pushing that in Broomfield you do not want to be setting off fireworks. I know that Abby was going to add to that, to be able to say, particularly, we have many veterans in our community, so consider this a PSA. I know I'm preaching to the choir, so I don't know why I'm looking at council, but I don't have anyone else to look at. And Chief Hempelman can certainly add value to this, so not just for the pets that are at home, but we are in a high-fire danger time right now through our surrounding communities. There's been a lot of feedback about why are we even having fireworks, so just if you could refrain this year and every year, but particularly this year. Chief Hempelman can talk a little bit after the emergency ordinance that I know will be brief and fly right through about the hotline, and I know that we have our fire department here, Chief Ramos, and blocking up these calls, even though they're on the hotline, for people that are setting off fireworks really does take effort, energy, and focus away from the most important things in our community, and that really is public safety. So just don't do it this year. Come or watch for the Broomfield Commons. And now we're going to get to the main issue, Ms. Penya-Helm, who just won an award, by the way.
Congratulations. I like these shout-outs.
Yeah, I like them too, staff, probably. Not so much, but Ms. Penya-Helm was just recognized. Chief Hempelman, just real quickly, this is a really big deal, and Ms. Penya-Helm would never say anything like this on her own, but Chief Hempelman, will you give us the shout-out and where she was recognized, please?
Yes, of course, and good evening. So today I received an email just recognizing Ms. Christina Penya-Helm as an expert, a subject matter expert, from our legislative sessions that we've had through our Chiefs' Association, and they actually sent me an email thanking her for her involvement and how critical she was in assisting with the decisions during the legislative session over this last about four to five months, so we're very honored.
Thank you, and as I've said before, it's an honor to work with Broomfield and the Broomfield Police Department. So for the ordinance, again, I'm Christina Penya-Helm, Senior City and County Attorney, here with Chief Hempelman. Chief Ramos is also here from the North Metro Fire, if there's any questions after the presentation. We're bringing this ordinance, this emergency ordinance today during a time of increasing concern regarding wildfires in Colorado, especially after the Marshall Fire that devastated neighboring communities. The goal of the ordinance is to regulate outdoor burning that could be dangerous and impose a risk to the Broomfield community. The Broomfield Police Department currently does work closely with North Metro Fire to mitigate fire danger. However, currently, there's no clear restrictions in the Broomfield Municipal Code allowing for enforcement or a clear legal basis for the police department to make contact with residents regarding fire issues. The proposed ordinance does detail when outdoor burning is allowed or prohibited and contains a clear enforcement mechanism. Next slide. The Broomfield Police Department, along with the City Attorney's Office, worked closely with North Metro Fire to create this proposed ordinance that would allow for immediate enforcement if necessary. Specifically, this ordinance adds open burning restriction to the Broomfield Municipal Code. Outdoor burning is defined in the proposed ordinance that's been included with the packet, and according to the ordinance, open burning would be restricted during a Level 1 fire restriction or a Level 2 fire ban, also when a burn permit is required and not obtained. The ordinance prohibits open burning of trash and rubbish, and it also clarifies when a recreational fire, which is also defined in the ordinance, is permitted. If there is a citation that is issued for a violation, a person would be subject to the general penalties that are in the municipal code currently.
Next slide, please. So next steps, the Broomfield Police Department will continue to work with North Metro Fire District to educate the public and to protect against dangerous outdoor burning. Basically, the focus of Broomfield officers will be to gain voluntary compliance, that's always our goal. When necessary, a citation can be issued, and enacting this proposed ordinance on an emergency basis allows for immediate enforcement during the current fire season. A little bit that I'd like to share is that now with all the Senate bill, we really needed to have that, this clear legal basis for contacting. So what that means is previously, we can contact someone and just say, please, can you not light your fire, your fire pit, dangerous, it's high winds, the temperatures, everything else. Now, we have to have a very specific reason to contact someone and say, you cannot do this. Without this ordinance, we cannot make that contact. We really will work on that compliance. We always aim to have that, the education piece, and really have the compliance in the sense of just doing what's right for the community and making it safe. Next slide, please. So how residents can help with this situation? If this passes, it will be helpful to make sure that our community is familiar with the provisions of this ordinance. Consult with North Metro Fire as well as our Broomfield Public Health, and really make sure that our community is educated on when they can have a burn permit and when one is required. I know we've talked previously about the emergency notifications with Lookout Alert, we've added that on here, lookoutalert.com, and we always tell our community, help us by having a go-bag ready in case there is an emergency, and we'll continue to make sure that our community is educated on evacuation plan if needed. I've added on here more tips for emergency preparedness, broomfield.org/emergency. Next slide, please. Are there any questions?
We'll see. We'll now proceed with public comments. First, does any member of the public have any comments on this item? No, well then, we'll move on to councilmember questions. Councilmember Lim?
Yes. Are the Level 2 conditions meant to be inclusive of Level 1 conditions, or should the Level 2 conditions repeat the Level 1 restrictions? I had this question when I looked at the code.
Absolutely. We actually have the fire chief here tonight, and I think he's going to be the one who can really explain all the different levels.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's good to be here tonight with all of you, and I want to give my shout-out to the city manager. I loved your PSA on the fireworks. As a fire chief, I really appreciate that. The answer to that question is yes, Level 2 is inclusive of those lower levels. So once you reach that Level 2 ban, everything below is also prohibited.
Okay, that wasn't, that wasn't obvious to me in looking at the code, because some of the Level 1 fire restrictions are repeated in the Level 2 code, in the Level 2 fire ban, but the most distinguished one that stuck out to me was the fireworks are listed under Level 1 but not repeated in the Level 2, whereas like the model rockets is repeated in both Level 1 and Level 2. So as long as it's clear to, I mean, is, do, it wasn't clear to me in reading it, the code, that Level 2 included Level 1. So just so it, the message gets across to the public that Level 2 is inclusive of Level 1 restrictions.
Right, I think we do our very best to ensure we're doing a good job with the public education, both the City and County and North Metro Fire, but I think I'd have to turn that back over to the city attorney on, could you know, could we clarify that language a little more? But I think, I think we can handle it. I don't know if you agree without modification.
I think, as was stated by the chief, that the education piece could be, you know, that Level 2 is, or Level 1 is subsumed in Level 2, because Level 1 is also a different name, the fire restriction, and Level 2 is the fire ban, so that's more inclusive, I would say. And it'll also really depend also on training our officers who will be responding to these calls, that that is the meaning of this ordinance, and also obviously working with the fire department on responding to these calls as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you. Just to follow up in terms of reading the terms of the ordinance, under the second level D, there's a list of definitions. Is that supposed to be the glossary for both Level 1 and 2?
So the definition section is all of 18, or 8, 18, 0, 1, 0 definitions, and so the Level 1 and Level 2 are actually under the fire ban and fire restriction definition, it's just more clarification of what that definition is, if that makes sense.
Okay, I was trying to understand, like, Councilmember Lim, under the restriction 1C, it said use of portable or fixed outdoor fireplaces, and I'm not, if I look at the definition below, that includes fire pits, but the use of the word fireplace under Level 1, it wasn't clear to me whether that included fire pits, which a lot of people use. I guess I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what we're doing.
I will say, regarding fire pits, that's also why we included a definition of recreational fire as a definition, and also under the restriction of when a recreational fire is permitted and is not permitted, depending on what restriction is in place.
So the terms, those six definitions under Level 2 are supposed to be in addition to A through D? Sorry, I'm not underst, I guess I'm not understanding what those are.
I can give that a go. I think the definitions are to explain in regards to the ordinances, so to ensure that when we, when we do the enforcement of the ordinances, that we have those definitions in place so that everybody knows what the definition of a recreational fire, et cetera, is. So it's, it's actually, it's put there for the ordinances, not for the fire ban restrictions. Does that make sense?
If you put a Level 1 in place, can I use my fire pit?
The Level 1 fire restrictions say you are allowed to, yes.
Because it says fireplace. And a fireplace assumes there's a chimney?
Correct.
Okay, but Level 2, I wouldn't, because it says either under, sorry.
Yeah, because a Level 2 is more restrictive than a Level 1, and so there's worse conditions for a fire, so the mitigation would be.
I'm just trying to understand, if I, if we put Level 1 or 2 in place, what I can or cannot do, but I guess I'm trying to read, Level 2, there's A, B, C, D, and then there's six additional definitions. That, that's supposed to further explain A through D?
No, that's supposed to explain the definitions for the ordinances, for the enforcement of the ordinances.
The whole thing, okay.
Those indented provisions are subdefinitions for fire ban, fire restriction. So, so it could, because it goes in alphabetical order, fire ban, fire restriction is a declaration, period, and that might include, so they're, they're to help define fire ban, fire restriction more, but open burn, open burning is a separate definition from those indented descriptions above.
Doesn't it specify open burning of trash or rubbish, too?
So it's specifically for trash and rubbish, not chimeneas?
Yes, there's a specific definition for what trash and rubbish is, and then also a specific restriction of burning trash or rubbish.
And if it's helpful, you know, moving from restriction 1 down to restriction 2, some of those recreational burns, you're really burning wood and other material, that's a real big hazard, right? When the winds kick up and those embers fly, and as you move further down, you even have limited to no use of gas fire grills, right, which are much safer. And so you do have restrictions on those recreational fires, chimeneas, wood burning in 1, and then further restrictions in 2 that further curtail items in 1, so it always builds upon 1, you know, it doesn't become, you can't do something in 1 while you're in 2, just because it wasn't restated, and it's really, that's the big difference, is you got those things that, those charcoal burning and wood burning fireplaces that create that real hazard.
Yeah, it is definitely a hazard. Thank you. And is, is that the rest of your questions, councilmember? Okay, councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if it wouldn't make sense just in Level 2 to say all restrictions in Level 1 in addition, Level 2, I mean, just that would clarify that, that issue. I just, I wanted to just congratulate you and thank you. I know a number of residents are very nervous about any flame. I've certainly seen some emails of people worried about other neighbors who are burning items, and of course, with the Fourth of July coming up, this is a very scary time for a lot of people, and we aren't getting the rain that we would hope for. So I think the staff is doing a great job to put this forward. I certainly am supportive of it, but I do agree with my colleagues, a couple little tweaks would clarify and make it less questionable. You don't use the word fire pit anywhere, you do use the word fireplace consistently, so that may just be more us, because we use the word fire pit, but typically, as my colleague just asked, a fireplace typically has a chimney, but a fire pit doesn't, and many of us have fire pits on our decks or in our yards and stuff, so you may want to add fireplace slash fire pit, just to be clear on that. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you do use the word fire pit, I just saw it, yeah, so you might want to just reinforce that.
Any councilmember, March Holson?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to thank you for bringing this forward. You know, we have a resident in our neighborhood, in our ward, that has complained about their neighbors burning fire pits so hard, high that they, you know, melt the wires above the thing, so this will definitely help, especially in these, you know, dangerous times that we have with the weather and the droughts and everything. I do echo Councilmember Cohen's comments, that it is, does read a little confusing the way the definitions, to me, are laid out. It almost looks like the, it almost looks like, you know, the first burn permit is definitions, and then when you get to fire ban restriction, that's the, the meat of the ordinance, and then it goes back to definitions, so it just, it just read a little odd to me. But just one question, and I want to make sure I clarify, so we're talking about outdoor fire pits, it looks to me like, so Level 1, I can have my wood burning fire pit in my backyard. Level 2, I can't have my wood burning fire pit, but I can have a propane burning fire pit if I can turn it off with a knob, is that correct? Because it says it can be, if it cannot be immediately turned off and extinguished by a switch, then I can't, then I can have it, so.
So I want to clarify a couple things. We took our exact definitions right out of the fire code with Mr. Goslin, who's here tonight, and I think he would probably be the best to clarify. We used their exact definitions and made sure that we didn't change them, so that when there is enforcement. So Steve, it sounds like you might be able to clarify on the bit different levels, because it sounds like that's the big confusion. So we may have to tweak the verbiage on the Level 1 and Level 2, because I think if it's unclear now, it'll be unclear for us as well. But I'd like for him to at least answer your questions, to make sure that there's clear information being passed on tonight of what we're doing for the future.
Yeah, a fairly simple issue becomes very complex when you're trying to write an ordinance about it, and even in the fire code itself. But to answer your question, yes, the restrictions for gas fed appliances that can be turned off with a valve, switch, or knob are much, much lower because of that ability than anything like a pellet stove, or a fire pit, or a chimney, or a fireplace. So the answer to your question is yes, you could have your gas grill, your gas fire pit, under a Level 2, because it can be turned off immediately.
Thank you. Mayor, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Lindstedt?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry it was Mayor Protim before you.
I can go, I have one question, so if, I think I'm getting some echo, but if I was a member of the public who was watching this tonight and probably a little bit confused, where could they go online to see what the current restrictions are and what they're allowed to do in an easy-to-digest format?
So once this gets passed, we'll post the ordinance and update it online, and I think from just being here tonight, I think we're going to have to be really clear so that the community has that clear speech, but it will be posted online under our ordinance section.
But, but is there, is there a place, a page, like fire restrictions page, that'll just list what is currently restricted and what is not, or are they going to have to see what level we're in and try to, try to figure that out?
Well, we can definitely create that, that's a great idea. Right now, we do put our restrictions on our, on our social media as well as on our fa, our, our main website, and then it'll take them to a link to the ordinance, but I think to your point, we'll be able to put Level 1, and then we'll just attach that for the day or the week or for however long that is.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, this would be really confusing just for a person trying to decide if they are allowed to have a backyard fire pit with, with wood in it or not, so if we could do that some, some way that's.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Thank you.
That's my only comment, thank you, Mayor.
Comment, because I've used it before, North Metro posts what the current restriction is on their website, so if we're under a fire restriction, too, and pushes it out on social media, because I follow that as well.
Yeah, and maybe just a little follow-up to that, we do exactly what you're asking for, and we spell out what that means. If we say, this is Level 1, what that means for you on our website, and I think we're trying to mirror that between the City and County and North Metro. county and North Metro, so we'll try to do a better job if we're not doing it yet.
That would be great, thank you so much.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, quick question, just want to clarify that this is a brand new provision that's addressing outdoor burning, so currently, right now, is there anything that restricts outdoor burning in Broomfield?
Well, right now, it's based solely off of the decision for which fire ban we have in place, we do have burn permits that will specify what can be burned and what time and the dates, but there's, this ordinance really specifies that every day burned when we have high winds and high temperatures, and you're worried about your neighbor, for example, having a fire pit, so right now, we don't have anything that gives us enforcement action, and that's what this will do, is allow us to at least knock on the door to say you cannot have a fire pit for this reason due to this fire ban, so it's a little confusing because we do have, the fire marshals have that authority to, to place, to go out and make those contacts, but the fire, our fire department doesn't have that enforcement, enforcement status, if you will, and with us not having this ordinance, the police doesn't have it either.
Right, I guess what I want to just, I just want to make clear, I mean, I looked through our code, I didn't see anything that prohibited outdoor burning right now, I, there, there were a few things that, that did address burn permits, I think a lot of that addressed it due to air quality issues, and I think it was pretty much specific to that, so just want to make sure it's very clear that this is a brand new ordinance, this is not just enforcing something that's already existing, this is a brand new ordinance that that's addressing outdoor burning, and I think that wasn't very clear and maybe a bit misleading, so I just want to make sure that that was very clear to everyone who's paying attention, the five people that are out there. Now.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any problems with it, the one thing that gave me a little bit of pause, but I, I, I did appreciate the, your comment was the enforcement part of it, I did see that the penalty could be fairly onerous to someone, not, not just monetarily, but also up to your jail time, I believe, if, what it refers to, and I could see, I guess, in extreme instances where that's, you know, if an outdoor burn created a, you know, fire like we saw six months ago, maybe that would be appropriate, but, so I'm not going to question it beyond that right now, but I did, I did like to see that, you know, for most instances, that, that you guys will operate in a friendly manner and really notify the residents first, and, you know, hopefully only have to escalate things if it gets to a, you know, two or three-strike level. So, having said all that, you know, the one thing that I would request is that since this is a, you know, a brand new ordinance, and it's being passed on emergency review, and there's certainly some confusion here on city council tonight, and it's not getting the same vetting that I would get if this was a typical ordinance that would be published and have significant public input, what I would just ask is that, you know, in six months from now, that we sort of have a, a review period where it's just brought back to us and we can see, you know, how things are going, if there were any confusion, anything that needs to be tweaked, and, you know, see if anything needs to be changed.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I, I like that, I, I agree, Mayor Protem, there probably needs to be a little more grace, as you said, to try to get voluntary compliance, and then if, after several attempts at that, you know, at least it gives us some enforcement mechanism, which is what we're lacking right now.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, next is council's consideration of proposed emergency ordinance number 2183, which has already been formally introduced, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll now vote on emergency ordinance number 2183, will the clerk please call the roll?
Leslie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Lindstedt?
Yes.
Marsh Holson?
Yes.
Schaaf? Ward?
Yes.
Anderson? Cohen?
Yes.
Hinkel? Jazurski?
Thank you, that passes unanimously, ordinance number 2183 passed as an emergency ordinance, per the charter, the emergency ordinance will take effect in eight days, since, yep, that's it, thank you all so much, and thanks for being patient with our questions. Our final item under council business this evening is the monthly oil and gas update for June 2022, council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
We're having to now go back and forth on, we're finalizing the council room update, so now we have it down between our, who actually is speaking and who actually has to hit the button for the other person that's speaking.
Okay.
Circle out a little more coordination. Oil and gas update.
Oh, we had some of our folks online for this, is that what you're saying, we have Zoom?
Oh, no, I just wasn't clear, I'm just saying Nancy has to hit the button for me to speak, and I have to hit the, the button for Nancy to speak.
Are we still working out the bugs?
We absolutely are, and that's part of, that's also part of the internet. Yeah, several, several times, so we're, we're continuing to refine it.
It's all right.
We are excited to hear about the oil and gas update.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council, this evening's monthly update is focused around the 2022 first quarter air quality monitoring report. Last week, Broomfield's oil and gas inspection team discovered a midstream gathering line leak through proactive collaboration with our AQM partners, this partnership is essential to effectively pursuing the goals of our AQM program, which are geared towards informing Broomfield Public Health and the public about air quality events, and contributing to the body of research and data related to oil and gas operations towards future policy and regulatory efforts. Council and residents may view the AQM report in its entirety by using the link in the staff memo for this item. This evening's presenters from both Ajax Analytics and Boulder Air will provide brief summaries on their findings, we will begin with Morgan Fraser, presenter for Ajax Analytics.
Ms. Fraser?
Good evening, everyone, thank you, Mindy, thank you, Mayor and council, for taking the time to review Ajax's quarter one 2022 program review, we are happy to share our results and can answer any questions that you may have following the program. Right, click, sorry, first, there we go, okay, here's an outline of what we will be discussing today, starting with an air monitoring program overview to remind council what it is we do here at Ajax, next we'll move into our summary findings from quarter one in comparison to previous quarters, and then we'll briefly touch on what we can expect and what we've seen so far moving into quarter two. Next slide, please. To remind council what it is we aim to do as a company, we characterize and quantify air contaminants using PID sensors and triggered canister samples, we provide insight regarding emission sources based on those triggered canister sample concentrations, we compare air quality with the standardized health guidelines for those species which have defined guidelines, we share our information with citizens as openly as we can, and we provide air quality info to Broomfield to evaluate and compare to reported health effects during a given timeframe, for example, when a trigger is canistered, or a canister is triggered. Next slide, please. We like to think of air monitoring as a scale, which on one end, we have no knowledge, and on the other, the ideal air quality monitoring program would be able to identify exact concentrations of hundreds of species in every cubic meter, every second of every day, as this is not realistic, our monitoring philosophy is to maximize measurements over time and space with the resource, the resources that we do have, we then extend our measurements with modeling and assumptions, working to limit our uncertainty while not extending our assumptions beyond the realm of credibility. Next slide, please. The Broomfield program combines targeted monitoring near concerned sites along with community level monitoring designed to identify hotspots and characterize Broomfield's air quality over time, what our program does is not identify individualized exposure of specific compounds, such as a toxological study would do. Next slide, please. All right, so here we have the summary results of quarter one 2022, we had 12 sites deployed just as we had previously, this quarter saw 25 canisters, 21 of which were valid triggered canisters, and four of which were citizen grab canisters, there were no plume tracker deployments, we had 115 quarter one weekly canister samples, which were added to our collective database regarding weekly air concentrations throughout Broomfield, and our quarter one uptime was 93.2%, regarding this uptime calculation, and despite the maintenance that took place at Livingston sites throughout much of the quarter, this uptime was an improvement from quarter four 2021, which had an uptime of 92.6%. Next slide, please. Now moving on to the program update from deployment to the end of March 2022, next slide. Here we can see the weekly distributions throughout most of the program history of TVOC CSU 49, which is again, the 49 species that comprise our TVOC lab analysis, this distribution of concentrations across the network is represented by the lines shown here, with red being the maximum, blue being the average, and green being the minimum, don't know if this pointer works, I guess not, but. You can see clearly in the graph that the drilling operations taking place at Livingston throughout much of the start of the program, we can see that Livingston operations throughout much of 2019 and early 2020, and then we see the drilling operations beginning at Northwest Parkway, United, and the interchange pads in late 2021. Throughout quarter one 2022, there is a narrowing distribution between the average and the maximum compared to what was observed in the beginning of production activities throughout quarters three and quarter four of the recent drilling operations, this narrowing distribution is representative of the, representative of the transition from drilling, fracking, and coil tubing operations throughout much of quarter four to more closed loop and flowback operations throughout quarter one, you may notice that there is a sharp cutoff previously during the Livingston operations in early 2020, which signifies the same transition, this transition this time around has been much more gradual, simply due to the fact that we're operating at five different pad sites compared to where we were previously just drilling at Livingston, which was one. Next slide, please. Exploring that variability or increased range a bit more with the box and whisker plots, which shows the median and the distribution of concentrations, along with outliers as those weekly gray dots that you see, we look at key metric concentrations sorted by the monitoring site type, we see here that all key metrics similar to the TVOC maintain a similar minimum and average on most weeks, we also note that oil and gas focus sites show more individual weeks with outlier measurements, signifying that those stronger outliers are occurring at the oil and gas sites. Next slide, please. We see, here we see the weekly benzene concentrations throughout much of the program history, with the red representing the maximum, blue the average, and the green the minimum concentrations, note quarter one is pretty much on par with previous quarter one averages between .16 and .21 parts per billion, quarter one saw .17 part per billion, in comparison to quarter four, we can see that the distribution is again narrowing, and the maximum concentration recorded decreased to .36 from .47 parts per billion, there is a slight increase between the minimum and the average concentrations between quarters four and quarter one, but this is only by .01 part per billion, in context with ATSDR chronic health guideline, which is shown by the orange line to the far right of your screen, Broomfield is well below that limit, and has since decreased from the previous two quarters. Next slide, please. One of the most important methods that we've introduced here in Broomfield is the ability to auto-trigger canister samples during plume events, these one-minute samples are an excellent way to get more information about the range of concentrations that can be seen on a very short-term basis over a short area, this information tells us about the short-term concentrations that are being aggregated into that weekly sample, this plot, which is also available on the Broomfield dashboard, shows the concentrations from each triggered canister, which are shown as the colored shapes you see, in context with the range of one-week concentrations from the common site, which are those gray bars in the background, and again, in comparison with health guideline values for a given species, if they have one, which are those black arrows you see at the top of the graph. What we see is that on a minute-by-minute basis, short-duration concentrations can have a much larger range than what is measured on a one-week basis, for example, while we see on a weekly basis, the TVOC concentrations max out at about 100 parts per billion, on a one-minute basis, they can reach as much as 10, 10,000 parts per billion or even more. In quarter four, we started a measuring process of increasing our trigger thresholds with a goal of identifying the top end of one-minute concentration ranges that we might see in the real world, this goal seemed proven, seemed successfully proven, as quarter one saw some of the highest benzene concentrations and highest TVOC concentrations in the quarter and throughout the program's history, I'll describe those a little bit more in the next slide, moving on, however, we had the highest TVOC event recorded in the program's history at 10,749 parts per billion, which took place at the Northwest Parkway two monitoring station, as well, we also had the highest one-minute benzene concentration at 80.5 parts per billion in early February, also at Northwest Parkway, these two events can be seen by the yellow diamond and the orange square, pretty much on the top of those species concentrations throughout the whole graph. Next slide, please. Not only did we see the absolute highest benzene measurements in the quarter, we also saw three of the highest events since the start of the program, here we see the one-minute benzene trigger sample concentrations since the beginning of 2020, you can see that quarter two had previously the highest benzene captured sample at 53 parts per billion in quarter two of 2020, you can see that this quarter, we saw 64.7, 70.9, and 80.5 parts per billion, all at the Northwest Parkway site, a detailed analysis of these events showed that a source of the plume likely originated at the Northwest Parkway B pad during coil tubing operations. Next slide, please. While we measured some of the highest concentrations we've seen in Broomfield throughout quarter one, we thought it'd be insightful to see how Broomfield compares to other monitoring networks that we conduct, we did an analysis of cross-network weekly VOC concentrations, which you can see in the graph displayed, with both Broomfield and our Erie monitoring networks, Broomfield weekly TVOC concentrations are displayed in green, with the bolder line being the average and the lighter line being the maximum concentrations, Erie's program is represented by the red lines, with the bolder red line being their average and the lighter line being their maximum TVOC weekly concentrations, you can see that throughout quarters three and four, TVOC concentrations were pretty similar, however, moving into the end of quarter four, and much of quarter one, Erie's concentrations are much higher, for Erie, the average TVOC CSU 49 is almost always higher than the Broomfield maximum, most of Erie's emissions are coming from the front range landfill, surface emissions of subsurface gases, equipment leaks, and urban and traffic emission sources, Broomfield emissions are almost always from a combination of production activity and those urban traffic activities, what's most noticeable is that these active production activities in Broomfield are not increasing the weekly TVOC concentrations as significantly as the source attributions in Erie. Next slide, please. A further breakdown of this analysis includes a closer look at relative VOC contributions by site, what we're looking at is the average TVOC indicator from each monitoring station based on a given number of measurements, here we've included the Broomfield network, the Erie network, and a private customer, CE Brooks, CE Brooks site is about 7.5 miles north of the edge of the Broomfield network in Erie County, we were hired by the landowners to monitor air surrounding an older KP Kaufman well pad, which we had three sites monitoring that pad from August 21st, or August 2021 to February 2022, which is the timeframe we can see analyzed here, our findings really helped put both Erie and Broomfield into perspective, you can see that CE Brooks has had the highest TVOC indicator by nearly 45% from the highest Erie station, which was landfill north, shown third on the screen there, you can see that the Broomfield stations are all starred on the left-hand side, interchange two closely followed by Northwest Parkway two during this timeframe, saw the highest TVOC indicators, which are still seventh and eighth highest across all of our monitoring sites. Next slide, please. For a little bit more perspective on this, we put together a spatial visualization of. we put together a spatial visualization of these average TVOC indicator measurements so that we can visualize each station's measurements in proximity to one another. This includes much of the history of our monitoring programs from February two thousand and twenty to the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. Down towards the bottom, you'll see the extent of the Broomfield Network, with the northwestern sites representing Erie and Weld County operations. We have a video to share, which I'm hoping will work. I'm not sure if IT has a special way of doing this. There we go, that's perfect. So as we play through the video, keep an eye on Northwest Parkway Two. Once it pops up, the red colors are gonna, the red columns are going to be the higher one-hour averages, with green colors being shorter one-hour averages. You'll notice some stagnant high red columns, which indicates a mechanical issue with the station that needs to be investigated and the data may need to be rechecked. You'll also notice high TVOC indicator averages at interchange here, which is over to the far right there. This was during the time during Livingston activities. This is two thousand and twenty, late two thousand and twenty, moving into early two thousand and twenty-one right now. And these are again our average weekly TVOC values at each monitoring station. So in a minute here, you'll see the Erie Network and the expansion of the Broomfield Network pop up as we move into summer two thousand and twenty-one. And what you'll notice right away is that, um, the columns are significantly greater in the Erie network than they are previously in the Broomfield. And at that top middle of your screen, you'll see those C E Brooks sites, which are again constantly red and, um, more dominant than the other sites. Most significantly, you'll notice that the columns show longer time spans of higher TVOC concentrations throughout Erie and especially C E Brooks. Whereas Broomfield, even the Northwest Parkway Two site, which saw the highest concentrations, does not reach the higher concentrations very often, and they don't last very long. They're very short-lived compared to what we're seeing in other monitoring networks. We're learning to put Broomfield measurements into perspective through all the data that we've collected so far. When we started, we really didn't know the scope of the data we were collecting. And now we have a broad range that we can compare against Erie and Weld County operations and even cities like Commerce City with the help of Boulder Air. Combining all of this data that we've collected and from the beginning of the program is really helping to put Broomfield emissions into perspective. Next slide, please. So now we'll just look and take a brief preview of what we can expect for quarter two and what we've seen so far. We've anticipated a much quieter quarter two than quarter one with less triggered samples, which is what we've seen. We've only triggered a level sample so far with the quarter ending next week. We expect this to be a combination of those increased trigger thresholds as well as operations moving into mainly closed-loop flowback activities as nearly all the pads at once. We expect the one-week monitoring results to look similar to the post-Livingston operations. And finally, we're moving towards more stable systems. We have learned a lot, especially throughout quarter one, about the mechanical operations of our systems. We're gaining a good understanding of the symptoms as older systems reach the end of their useful life, and we've implemented new procedures for identifying and resolving many of these issues that we've seen throughout quarter one. Next slide, please. Our report has been posted to the public website along with all of our other previous quarterly reports. You can access these at any time. And next slide, please. And then with that, we'll happily take any questions you have following Boulder Air's presentation. Thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you very much. Next is, uh, are we gonna do, um, dead lives and then we'll do questions? Is that the plan? Well, let me check the script. Doesn't say. Hi, Miss, Mr. Helmig.
I suppose he doesn't need any introduction now, right?
Thank you, Mindy.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members, public. I'm glad to be back here. Quarter one highlights and a little bit outreach into quarter two as well. Next slide, I don't think I can advance from here. Um, so again, we are operating two fixed monitoring stations. Right now, one is in, um, Broomfield Soaring Eagle Park, the star on the left, and the second one, we call B and P, Broomfield North Picos. And that's, um, important to remember, it's surrounded by five well pads, um, the northwest A and B, the United, and the interchange pads. So it's kind of right in the, in the center between those pads, whereas the, um, Soaring Eagle side is more a neighborhood-oriented monitoring side. The next slide, please. You've seen this before, just a quick update. Um, the Soaring Eagle side, you see the picture here again, it's been operating since April two thousand and twenty, so two point three years of data by now. It's been running and running and running. Um, you see the species again being monitored, all these different air pollutants. Um, North Picos was moved to that current location about a year ago, has been running there continuously around the clock. Um, we moved a methane analyzer from Soaring Eagle to North Picos. Unfortunately, there's no methane monitor anymore at Soaring Eagle, which is really regrettable, and you've seen a moment why that is. Website reports all the data, has been up and running continuously. It's, um, seems to be well-recognized by the public, gets lots, lots of visitors, um, all along. Next slide, please. Okay, so today, presentation topics. Um, I wanna just review program accomplishments to date. The question came up last time when I spoke here, why are we doing this? What are we getting out of it? So I took that as a challenge. First couple, three slides, and we'll go over that, review what we've accomplished so far, then the quarter one updates and a little bit of quarter two outlook. So the next slide, please. So, uh, two years. Um, up and running, what have we accomplished? That's, the longer I was thinking about it, the more came, came to my mind. So to run you through this real quick. Um, we've identified and helped eliminate settling benzene emissions from the Broomfield Livingston pad. We identified and helped eliminating hydrogen sulfide source at Broomfield Soaring Eagle Park. We identified methane emissions from north of Soaring Eagle. Um, we investigated the monitoring results in the context of citizens' report of nosebleeds. Um, we identified characterized the winter photochemical smoke event last March, which was shocking to have, um, photochemical smog this early in the year. We characterize exposure from wildfire smoke last summer, many, 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 many days. I'm sure you remember that. Um, last year was a big, big ozone season. We had forty-seven exceedances of the Ozone National Air Quality Standard. And remember, if you have more than four, you're in violation of the EPA Ozone Air Quality Standard. We, um, characterize a pretty significant benzene plume, uh, ten-minute average of fourteen point six parts per billion. That's a thousand, uh, five, six, five hundred, four hundred times above the background. Um, we identified fugitive emissions from the northwest A and B pads. Um, I reported on that, um, last time, very significant, um, releases there. We characterized the exposure to the December thirtieth, I think, two thousand and twenty-one Marshall fire smoke plumes. And the very last one, I'm gonna touch just today, something very recent. Um, we identified a gas pipeline leak in North Broomfield, um, just a few days ago. Um, and one more slide to, um, kind of show off what this, um, program has accomplished. So the next slide, please. Um, the abundance of this air monitoring that's been implemented in the front range, and that's not just Broomfield, but also partnering with the neighboring community, I think has, um, helped create more awareness, understanding, recognition of air pollution problems, of contributing sources of air pollution. And that has triggered a whole series of, um, air quality, um, regulations and policies. In two thousand and nineteen, um, the governor, um, reversed a deferral of the, um, ozone reclassification. Um, we have, um, six state and house bills are listed here that have been passed in the last three years. Um, the Protect Public Welfare Oil and Gas Operations Act, which was actually signed, that's the picture on the right in front of the Broomfield Soaring Eagle Park monitoring stations. There's the Climate Pollution Reduction Bill. Air Quality Enterprise was established to post a research, more research, studies on air pollution issues. Fence line monitoring requirements were implemented. Um, just recent, very recently, Hazardous Toxic Air Pollutants Bill was passed. And then there's a new Clean Air Ground Program, um, that's being launched now. So there's been a lot of activity, a lot of progress in the last few years. And I think, um, the programs supported by this community and other communities have very much helped to drive this regulation forward. So the next slide, please. So now let's look at, um, quarter one updates and data summaries. Um, so what happened, um, during this year? Um, next slide, please. Um, so what's new on our website? Um, we have this new interactive tool, um, that allows you to view where stations are, what's measured at east of these individual sites. You can see the, the middle ones are the green ones, those are the Broomfield sites, there's two in Commerce City now. And the other ones to the north, you've seen this before, but now you can zoom into the map, look exactly where they are. You can click on them and it will tell you what's measured at each of these individual sites. It's a new feature of the, the website, um, pages we maintain. And the next slide, please. Okay, I'm not so, um, happy event just happened a couple of weeks ago. Um, been worried about this and it actually really happened. This is a picture image taken from the security camera on the tower looking down at the Broomfield Soaring Eagle station. And shocking me, this was at twelve forty-five on Friday afternoon. Um, images triggered by our motion sensor where two males in a wet track boldly drove on the bike path towards the station, backed up, got out a battery-powered grinder, cut open the locks to the back doors of our trailer, opened the trailer and took some items out, loaded them in the truck and drove away. Took like less than ten minutes during the middle of the day. Um, we have seven of these security videos, um, that captured this whole break-in and theft. Um, fortunately, they didn't take, um, much of the analytical equipment, but, um, computers and other supplies. Um, so, yeah, very unfortunate, um, to witness this and see the footage when people walk away, run away with your equipment. Um, next slide, please. Um, let's look at some of the data. Something quite remarkable happened on January seventh. Um, this shows two years of data, if you look at the time scale at the bottom. And this is, um, these are the data of, of ethane, the measurements of ethane. There's some twenty thousand measurements in there, um, from the two Broomfield monitoring sites. So again, ethane is our oil and gas tracer. It's very selective, doesn't really come from many other things. Most of the ethane is from oil and gas. And it peaked at a seven hundred two P P B, just very briefly. Seven hundred two P P B, that's about six, seven, eight hundred times above the background. And it probably was even more than that because our instrument kind of maxes out at that. So it probably was even twenty, thirty percent higher than that. This plume also was very rich in propane. Again, that's about a thousand times more propane than you usually see in the background. It had benzene, toluene, and other VOCs. So as the site got hammered by a very dense, high-pollution plume, um, that had a very clear oil and gas, um, composition, and the highest we've seen in Broomfield to date. And to put this more in perspective, um, the next slide, please. That now shows the green data, Broomfield Soaring Eagle, with, um, five other sites where we are measuring ethane as well. Um, the Boulder Reservoir, um, Erie is in yellow. Um, at the very right of the graph in dark blue, you know, see Commerce City data, which just started to come in. Um, so you can see that, that plume was ways, ways higher than what we see down at Commerce City, right next to the Sunco Refinery. So it was a very significant, um, um, pollution plume. Um, and these high levels are, we've only really seen this extreme elevated ethane in Longmont, and I think the next slide will show that. So the next slide, please. Um, that now adds Longmont Union Reservoir, you can see in this pink now, that that's another side where we frequently see, um, high oil and gas, um, concentrations in plumes. That site is in Weld County, actually, um, but it's sponsored by, by, by Longmont. Um, but still, this, this one event we saw, um, Soaring Eagle, still tops everything we've seen to date. Um, the next slide, please. Um, benzene was also elevated in that plume. Um, this was, um, zoomed in window three months, um, quarter one. Um, the arrow points towards the benzene, um, concentration seen in that plume maximizing at, maxing out at four point four parts per billion. It's not quite as extreme, um, sticking out as much as for the ethane. So that plume had other VOCs associated with it, but it was a relatively dry gas, I would say. So the enhancements of benzene were not quite extreme, fortunately, as, um, for the lighter hydrocarbons. You can see, we, we do see, um, that range of benzene, um, every so often at some of the other sites as well. Um, next slide, please. Okay, we did a sector analysis, where was this plume originating from? Um, so that sector here defines, um, where the winds were swiveling around from when we sampled that particular plume. You could see it came from the east. Um, we cannot say with certainty which of these pads may have contributed to it. It may have come from somewhere else, but there's nothing really within the next nearest mile. So this plume must have traveled for quite some while, quite some distance so that, you know, anybody in the path of the plume was probably subjected to even higher concentrations. Um, so, next slide. Okay, there were two other remarkable events during quarter one. There was a fire on January fourteenth at Northwest Pad A. Um, you see some images here, another fire, March twelfth, at the, um, interchange A pad. Um, during both of these occasions, um, the plumes were actually transported the other direction. So neither of our two stations, um, encountered those smokes. So, you know, we, we don't have data to characterize them. It just blew the other way, blew to the east, to the north. Um, next slide, please. Okay, let's look at ozone, that was a big topic. Um, last year, there weren't any high ozone events during quarter one. Remember last year, we had this one early March ozone pollution event where the standard was exceeded. This graph shows, um, all of two thousand and twenty-two so far. Um, the yellow dotted line, again, is the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, which is at seventy parts per billion. And we have exceeded that, um, with the eight-hour average ozone. This is what's shown here three times so far. So so far, three exceedances of the standard. Um, and, um, we're, you know, approaching now the month, um, the months when last year we had the, the much higher, um, frequency of these exceedances. And I'll show that in a moment. Um, so the next slide, please. I think now shows, um, yeah, that shows the, um, fine particulate matter. It's another pollutant where we are occasionally, um, exceed air quality standards. Um, these are the quarter one data for PM two point fives. Those are the small particles that can migrate deep into your lungs. And Broomfield is actually relatively clean, um, when it comes to the particles. You can see at the bottom, the three months of data, the green data are relatively low compared to what we have in Erie. Erie has quite a high abundance of, um, pollution, particle pollution events. Um, then the, um, the new blue data, this is Commerce City, also, um, more particulate pollution. You also see that in the upper right, this is the statistical analysis. Um, and you can see the, the green boxes are the lowest in this comparison with, um, um, Longmont is the pink, um, Erie is the yellowish, and then Commerce City is the blue. So in terms of particles, um, So in terms of particles, the levels here in Broomfield have been quite moderate. Next slide, please. Now, this is a comparison of the air quality standard exceedances broken up by year and month. If you look at the very, at the bottom, the first, the first table is for ozone, the bottom one is for the particles. The very right column shows the total number of exceedances. So at the top for ozone, it was 15 in 2020, 47 in 21. So far, there's three this year. You can see there were none in January through April, and three in June. But if you go one row up, you can see that last year, it really hit us hard in July and August. So we'll have to see how the next couple, three months will look in terms of ozone exceedances. The same statistics are at the bottom for particles. So you can see no exceedances so far this year for particles. Last year, we had three altogether for PM 2.5. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a comparison of, it's a little blurry, last year's data, which is, so there's six different compounds here. It's benzene, ethane, ozone, nitrogen oxides. Then the particles, PM 10 and particles 2.5 in these statistical box whiskers comparing 2021 to 2022 data. I want to show this because I think it's interesting that in 2022, for quarter one, the benzene was higher than last year overall, and also the nitrogen oxides were higher than overall, which is a bit surprising because overall, we have seen slowly declining trends. So this defines the trend. And probably what we see here is the sign of the COVID restrictions having eased, and there's more people out there again, driving, more traffic, more activity. And that's probably most reflected in benzene and nitrogen oxides, which are primary emissions from, from traffic, from automobiles. So I think this actually shows nicely the change in these activities over the last couple of years. Okay, on the next slide, please. Okay, so that was the quarter one. We had an interesting observation in quarter two already. Since it has garnered some interest, I want to touch that real quick. So let's look at those data. So you've seen this already, what we noticed. This is, this is one year of data we now have for that Broomfield North Pico site. Again, this is the oil and gas tracer, ethane. And what we noticed there is in the last month, there's been an increased frequency of these spikes. And remember, the background of ethane is something like one, you know, so 100, it's 100 times above the background. That's a lot. 200, you know, it's 200 times above the background. This really, this is a really heavy pollution plume, high concentrations of ethane. We've never seen anything like that in Boulder, for instance, at the Boulder Reservoir. Never seen, don't ever see values above 100 there. So what's going on there? Where's this from? So we looked into this. I'll show you some more slides on that now. So the next slide, please. Okay, this looks at these, these concentration spikes as a function of wind direction. So at the bottom is the wind direction, 02360, 0 is north, 90 is east, 180 is south, 270 is west. And the red data, the Broomfield North Picos, and the blue radar, blue dots are for the Soaring Eagle. So what you see, North Picos has more samples with these high values. But we see some of these elevated data as well for the Soaring Eagle site. And they're really narrowly defined by wind direction. You know, they're not all over the place. That the two very distinct wind directions where we see these elevated values. The next slide, I've, next slide, please.
Dr. Helmut, if I, if I could interrupt you just for, just for one moment. If we could share the presentations with council for the, for the additional slides, and just to make sure that we have, that we're being mindful of time, want to be sure that we supply council with ample opportunity to ask questions. They're finding this information fascinating, and we sure appreciate, we just want to make sure there's plenty of time for, for, for questions. So, how do you feel about?
So do you want me to conclude this with this slide? Or there's seven left or six left?
Yeah, maybe just pick up the pace just a, just a little bit so that we have plenty of time.
Yeah, I'm actually very close to having this wrapped up. So the next slide, please. That shows the wind sectors for those two different plume directions, very clearly defined, southeast for the Soaring Eagle and southwest for North Picos. Then the next slide, please. We're looking at, just picked the 12 highest peaks and looked at specifically where did these originate from. So the next slide, please. The next slide shows just one of them, and we were really puzzled because they came from the south. All the well pads are to the north and to the east at North Picos. So we were actually very concerned that we had something wrong with our wind direction measurements, put a lot of effort into this, but got this all verified. And then if you do this analysis now for the whole abundance of these spikes, then we'll see the next slide, please. Yeah, so that then defines the darkest areas where this most likely source of these emissions originate from. And there's then an overlap between the wind sectors from Soaring Eagle and North Picos, where we thought that's the most likely location for the origin of these sources, for these emissions. And you can see this is just opposite of where the, the well pads are located. So very surprised about this finding. And then actually worked with the city and I think identified the likely source for this, these emissions. And I think that's put then on the, on the slide, on the next slide, where pipeline leak, I think, was discovered. Yeah, so that's a pipeline leak, I think was identified on Zuni and 152nd, which actually falls right nicely within the area we suspected this to be from our wind direction analysis. And I think then there's one or two more slides, if you could move that forward, please. Yeah, what's really remarkable is when we look at the relative enhancement in ethane over methane in these samples. So these elevated samples, they're on this, these red dots, and it fell nicely on the line. So this is a very characteristic composition of this, this plume. And it differs very significantly from what we see in, in most of the other data we've collected so far. And then there's the one more slide, if you could move that forward, please. So what I circled here that defines the composition of these plumes, it's very different, as I said, as in the other data we've seen. The ethane methane is about 15% by volume or 30% by mass. This is very, very rich. This is very different to what we've seen in, in some of these other fugitive emissions. So this is a different type of source. It's a different type of natural gas. Composition is about five times higher than in all of these other plumes. And it gives nicely how this, this really has such a much different fingerprint than everything else we've seen so far, not just from the direction, but also from the composition of this natural gas. And that's then my last slide, and happy to entertain some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Helmut. First, we'll go to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? I don't see any online either. So questions from city council are next. Does any member of council have any questions? Councilmember Lim?
Dr. Helmut, the residents who live near that leaking pipeline are very grateful, should be very grateful, that you made the effort to investigate that anomaly. Whether we appreciate your details of your scientific explanation or not, we appreciate, we very much appreciate the fact that you investigated it. Because that apparently was the start of this, of the discovery of this pipeline leak, which could have been catastrophic if it had been left, gone too long in leak, in leaking. I had some questions about the pipeline, but I'll wait with those. The, which, what you didn't say in the January 7th discussion was the operations that were going on at that time. So I think the report said that flowback started at Northwest A at, on January 7th. So when your wind direction pointed, that in that direction with Northwest Parkway, wouldn't the conclusion be that the plume that was actually record breaking all the way on Lowell actually came from the Northwest pad? Would that be possible?
I think that's a likely explanation. We don't monitor the pad activities day by day, hour after hour. We monitor these data, we provide them to the city, and I haven't reviewed the pad activities day by day by day. So I cannot tie those dots together very tightly right now. Wendy, do you remember what the activities were first week in January on these different pads, on the pads? Do you have that record?
By records, we were flowback in production as of January 7th this year.
Okay, so.
Okay. So I, I think that shows the possibility that we, they travel. Just because residents in other parts of Broomfield think these pads aren't next to them, doesn't mean they aren't at risk of these plumes traveling towards them. I had some questions about the sensors for Ajax. So the, the conclusion in quarter two was that they, is that you expect more stable systems. Wildgrass One was down for a week at the beginning of June. I just read the Ajax reports for the June 9th, two June 11th, and one June 15th. Northwest Bee triggers. The canister analysis says that was not an event, an emissions event. And there's a preliminary conclusion that it was probably temperature elevations that influenced the PID sensors. I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with that. I mean, it's the beginning of summer. We're facing a whole lot of temperature elevations coming forward. Are we to expect that these sensors aren't going to work throughout the summer?
Absolutely not. Our service level availability agreement commits to 90% uptime for the sensor network. We have yet to fail on that SLA. What we have learned through Q1, as Morgan mentioned, oh, and by the way, I'm Brent Buck, CEO of Ajax Analytics. Thanks for having us back. What we've learned is, as these sensor systems age, we're the first ones to really use these systems in ambient air for more than, you know, for years at a time. And we fully expected that we would start seeing some of the earlier systems age. We just didn't know what the symptoms would look like, or even necessarily what the repair procedures would be, or if we could repair them as they started breaking down. So we have learned a lot about what those symptoms look like. And one of the kind of main symptoms that we see are sensors that start responding a little more to humidity and/or temperature. So now we're, we've defined kind of those thresholds of how much response to humidity and temperature do we have before we go through the expense of really just replacing the sensor itself? So as we're defining those kind of proactive maintenance thresholds, we're starting to, to make those replacements. So I think we've replaced about a third of our, our sensors to date. And we can, we're now monitoring sensor systems to figure out, okay, when do we have to replace them? And we're starting to build our backlog of, you know, sensors in the, in inventory to be able to do that.
Okay, that, that's good, good news, because it was a little bumpy ride.
Learning always is. Being first always is, and I appreciate that you do it with us.
And for residents who are concerned, who pay attention to, oh my goodness, why are there three trigger canisters going off on Northwest A when there's no activity there? You know, it's, it's a little alarming.
Understood. From the beginning, we've always erred on the side of, we would rather trigger a sample with the risk that we have a false positive than be so safe and secure and protective of our reputation or not making any mistakes that we miss something. The downside of that is residents might say, what are you doing Ajax? It wasn't even a real sample. I'm willing to take that, that criticism to make sure that we're doing the best job we can.
Okay, thank you. I had pipeline questions. Can I, if maybe the staff could answer with the pipeline leak? Do we have a, the, do we have a handle on where this pipeline originated at all? I mean, it's kind of, the residents who live near wells, you know, are, there's some residents who are wondering, you know, is the pipeline, is this a pipeline that went through by my house that was leaking? And we know you pinpointed the leak, but did it go by my house? Are the wells that the pipeline is connected to near my house in Boulder open space, or just across the border in Adams County? And there's, I'm hearing a lot of concern about this. And I know you've, staff has tried to get answers and is frustrated by the lack of accountability in any regulatory authority. But I'm still getting a lot of questions like, am I safe?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lim. So staff, just like you on, on council, are learning about this midstream space as we go right now. In our conversation that we had with Civitas on Monday, this seems like it's an extensive gathering line system that spans Adams County and Boulder Counties. So it is large, and it's something like 50 years old. Our understanding is that it goes along utility corridors, along transportation routes, but we have not seen a map. And this is not something that's like regulated or overseen by the COGCC or the PUC. So it's, it's a gap. We're very happy we found this issue, and we're going to continue following up on this to put residents hopefully at ease. But, but yeah, it's, I, it seems crazy, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's a completely unsafe situation. I mean, we're, we're grateful that the air quality monitoring system discovered it apparently at an early stage, but it, it's crazy that this is an unsafe situation. And do we have some, my other question was, do we have some assurance that Civitas is going to continue to keep those wells shut in until the situation is resolved, since they are not wells in our jurisdiction? I mean, we don't even have control over them half the time when things are in our jurisdiction, much less, they're not in our jurisdiction.
Agreed. So today, we explored that topic, and I said, look, is there any activity happening related to the facilities or the wells connected to this issue anytime soon? And the, the answer was no. So like, we've said, we're going to stay on this situation, and any change, whether it's, you know, the status of the wells, or the status of the hole in the ground, we're going to be observing and reporting. We hope to have a conversation with the Public Utilities Commission this week to determine if there is someone who can take authority. But we do not have an answer on that right now.
Councilmember Lim, Andrew, if, if, if I may, so the, the layers of this onion continue to be peeled back with no end in sight?
Yeah, and I mean, you'd think we, we went through Firestone. We went through, we went through a lot of things. You'd think the state could figure this out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member questions? Well, I appreciate you all hanging with us and for the thorough update. We're going to move on. The city and county attorney's report is next. Ms. Rogers, do you have a report?
No, other than to say, it was nice to see those of you at CML. I know we were on different tracks, but it was good to, actually, I didn't get, I only crossed with a couple of you. But it was, I thought they did a really good job. I thought the sessions I was at at the legal track were very good. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. The city and county managers' report is next. Ms. Hoffman, do you have a report?
No, I advocate all my time to champion Bernie Block when it comes up for his time so that we can maximize everybody's time.
Thank you. There is no legislative update or any business before the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority or the Arista Local Improvement District Board of Directors. This evening, we will hear an update on the semi-annual performance internal audit. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. Bernie Block is going to provide us an update with the audit. And council will be hearing from Ruben Brown on our full audit. Abby, when is?
July 19th.
On July 19th. Mr. Block?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Bernie Block here to provide you with an update of the activities I've been working on since we last met in November of 2021. A quick overview of the audit process. Beginning of each year, we do a risk assessment by soliciting feedback from department heads, other members of senior management. Also try to pay attention to what's in the news impacting local governments. From that information, we develop a list of potential audits and try to prioritize those through some weighted measures. And then through discussions with the city manager's office and the city county attorney, we develop, select the projects for the annual project plan. Attachment 1 in your, to your council memo is the 2022 annual project plan. I've been continuing to assist with some COVID-19 response and recovery efforts as needed. As far as performance audits go, attachment 2 to the memo is a listing of the updates of audits that have been issued and have open audit recommendations or items that have been recently implemented since our last meeting. Bless you. Bless you. The audits that I've completed since we last met, Department of Human Services and Department of Public Health and Environment Operations Division. And we also did an employee leave benefits administration audit. And I'm currently working on a financial internal controls audit, which has a focus on segregation of duties for finance and human resources staff. Business process improvements include assisting public health department on a grants billing tool. And then I'm also working with public health staff to improve the reporting from a third-party vendor for financial transactions that need to be posted. Professional development, I've been working with Diversity Equity and Operational Development Department, planning activities to reignite the innovation ecosystem. It's a training curriculum focused on process improvement and change management-related techniques. We hope to refine the curriculum and get trainings ready in order to deliver that to staff either later in the year or the first part of 2023. So I know the audits have a lot of details in them, and the appendix 2 could put probably anyone, a good bedtime reading for anyone. So, but I'm here to answer any questions about any of the projects or activities that I've been working on, and so I'll open it up there.
Bernie, this just shows that you are doing such an outstanding job and how grateful we are, even though he's not going to be playing with this softball. Mayor Protem, I think you had a comment for Bernie regarding softball?
I was going to ask how his bat, how his softball swing was going.
I unfortunately was in a dirt bike accident a couple of weeks ago, and I'm still recovering from that, so physical therapy next month. I have to hit pause this year, but I plan to be there next year for sure.
Okay, well, we're going to certainly miss you on the team. You were one of our big bets.
Rumor has it, you've got some good people assembled, so.
Those may be very false rumors. Or inaccurate, inaccurate at the very least. We haven't had comments yet, Mayor. Are there any comments from city council? Councilmember Lim?
I did know, I did look at it. And the fee comparison, that was interested me, that that's on the, on the agenda, but not started yet. And I know we've heard bits and pieces of, you know, this, we're, we need to update our fees and just, I guess, does anyone have a good feeling, this was, the question came to mind, does anyone have a good feel for, will the fee update, if it's not been done in a while, likely recommend increases? And how significant do you feel like those might be? When we're talking a lot about budget balancing, that's what came to my mind when I saw, well, we are not quite starting the fee, look at the fee updates, but will it make, is there a chance it'll make a difference?
It's difficult to answer that question at this point in time, Councilmember Lim. There is currently no comprehensive resource where we have all of our fees documented in one location. And more importantly, when's the last time we've updated them? I think we can find it and piece it together. And so that's the purpose of this project, to provide management with more information on when those fees should be revisited. Also, the intent is to do some benchmarking with other local governments to understand where we are at compared to our peers in the area.
And Councilmember Lim, if I may, so when we're, when we're talking about fees, there's just so many categories of fees. So the fees that, that we'll be looking at internally, it's similar to the exercise that we had to go through with the plethora of business development agreements that didn't have a central repository. But on the big ticket items, such as the development fees, those are coming to council on July 19th. So what the internal that Bernie's tied, it's more about the recording fees. Reviewing what the fees are for resident and non-resident programs. So it's more of those internal, so to your question, would the fees make a difference on the bottom line? No. They will, they will allow us from a programming perspective, if we wanted to say, so right, right now, our cost recovery philosophy with rec, we collect about 60%. So every dollar we spend, we collect about 60%. So 40% is something that Broomfield determines is part of the subsidy to have the level of rec center. So that philosophy of, do we want to increase that, or are we good at a 60% recovery? That helps influence what those fees are. So again, from the, from the internal structure, but those big ticket items, we are, we are prepared. So we have the development review dollars. We have the Broomfield Housing Alliance for the cash in lieu that are also, we've finalized those numbers, we're just getting together the recommendations now. So in the next, again, in the next three months, we don't want to make recommendations, particularly on any of the community development items, without having those, kind of those preliminary questions first. And then, of course, we're coming to council with the rate study. So those costs will also, it'll be staff recommendations. But let's just say that there aren't going to be recommendations to decrease any of those. Safe to say.
Anybody else? Well, I think you're good. Thank you very much, Mr. Block, for this important update.
Thank you.
There are no mayor or council member requests for future action this evening, and that concludes the items on this evening's agenda. Is there any other business to come before the council? Saying none, the council meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.